Welcome to the San Jose City Council Meeting for the afternoon of November 19th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Jimenez.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Here.
Kamay.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by Pioneer High School's String Quartet, and Councilmember Batra will tell us more.
I'm honored to present District 10's second and final invocation of the year. As the future of our district, city, county, country will be shaped by the young minds of today, I have tried to engage the students and schools for every possible occasion I can, the proclamations, invocations. In that vein, the last year, I had Leland High School students perform their choir, perform the invocation at the city hall. This year, I'm proud to have the string quartet from another school, which is the Pioneer High School. The music department at Pioneer is comprised of two bands, two orchestras, a jazz band, and a choir. These ensembles perform throughout the year at a number of school and community events, including appearances at Santa Cruz Jazz Festival and the Forum Music Festival in Anaheim. The string quartet we see here today is made up of seniors from Pioneer's Chamber Orchestra. This class in particular focuses both on larger orchestral works and including classical and modern pieces, as well as student-led small groups. These small groups appreciate the opportunity to perform for the community and can be seen playing music in rest homes, at concerts, and events like this. I thank the members of the string quartet for being with us today to provide us with a beautiful melody to layman our day. Led by Laura Lee, Laura Levy, the music director with the Pioneer Music Department, for the past eight years, Laura is bassoonist in her spare time and can be seen performing with San Jose Band Symphony and advocating for the inclusion of elementary, visual, and performing arts in San Jose Unified School District. She has shared that she is so proud of the kind, inquisitive, and responsible student she gets to interact with every day and is thankful for the support of the program offered by the community. Thank you, Ms. Levy. Thank you again to the students with the Pioneer High School. Let's sit back and enjoy the beautiful music from these talented young individuals.
(Applause)
Well, thank you, Councilor Batra, for arranging this, and thank you to the Pioneer High School String Quartet. Thanks for sharing your talent with us. That was beautiful. All right, we are on to ceremonial items. Councilwoman Davis, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim November as Janet Gray Hayes Month.
I think we have some special guests coming down, and I think my female colleagues are going to join me. Yes.
Can I just invite Mayor Janet Gray Hayes?
Yes. Today, we honor an amazing San Jose leader and a woman many of us look up to as a strong defender of our neighborhoods in San Jose. Janet Gray Hayes was a force and a mentor to so many. She broke the glass ceiling by being the first woman elected as mayor of a major U.S. city in 1974, 50 years ago. I have to mention, we've only had one other woman elected as mayor in San Jose since then, and that was Susan Hammer. Mayor Hayes wanted to fight urban sprawl, and she supported district elections where neighbors were able to vote for candidates who lived in their areas, true representation. This honoring of Mayor Hayes is long overdue and is thanks to the advocacy of her former colleagues, friends, and family. Not only are we honoring Mayor Hayes with this month dedicated to her, but we have also named the city rotunda after her. In fact, we'll be hosting a naming reception today in the Janet Gray Hayes Rotunda at 5:00 p.m., and everyone is welcome to join us. Now, I, along with Mayor Mahan and our colleagues on the city council, proclaim November as Janet Gray Hayes Month in San Jose. And I'd like to welcome Mayor Hayes's daughters, Lindy Hayes, Megan Hayes, and Catherine Hayes-Rodriguez, to say a few words and then accept this proclamation on their families' behalf. Who's first?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this amazing honor for our wonderful mother, who was a tireless advocate for all things San Jose. We are just very, very honored and humbled by this designation of November as Janet Gray Hayes Month, and we will be here on an annual basis to celebrate with you all. Thank you.
This is so great. We're so thrilled. We just wish Mom was here, and go November. Yeah.
Yes, anybody still here, come join us at the rotunda at 5:00 p.m. for the official unveiling and dedication. Next, Councilwoman Candelaus, if you would join me here at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim November as Sikh American Awareness Month, and we'll invite leaders from the Sikh community to come on down.
All right, come on and fill in behind me. I just want to say, happy Tuesday, everybody. The mayor and I are excited to recognize and proclaim November as Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month. District 8 is home to one of the largest Sikh American communities in the state and the largest Sikh gurdwara outside of India. Every day, our city benefits from the work and leadership of our Sikh American neighbors, whether they are small business owners or part of Silicon Valley's tech innovation. Sikh American families have been essential to the success of San Jose and California. The Sikh faith is one of the largest religions in the world with an estimated 20 million followers. They are strong believers in serving the community, practicing the core values of seva, selfless service and justice. For decades, Sikh Americans have profoundly impacted San Jose, contributing to our diverse culture and social fabric. This November, let us come together to celebrate the cultural heritage and faith of our Sikh brothers and sisters, in addition to Janet Gray Hayes Month. Accepting the proclamation today is District 8 Planning Commissioner Dilpree Bundal. Dilpree is the first Sikh American to serve as a San Jose Planning Commissioner in over 20 years, and is a strong champion for neighboring our city. I'm happy to invite Dilpree Bundal to share a few words, and he's also an Evergreen Valley High School alum, so kudos to him. But Dilpree, share a few words, and then pass it on.
Thank you, Mayor Matt Mahan, and thank you, Councilmember Domingo Candelaus. The Sikh religion was founded in the 15th century in the northern Indian subcontinent by Guru Nanak Devji. Many Sikhs have now left their homes in India in a search for a better life, and many of them have chosen to settle in San Jose. We've left behind our family, our friends, our homes, and San Jose is our new shahar. Shahar means "city," the city of San Jose. With 60% of Sikhs being first generation and the remaining 40% being second and third generation, we love San Jose. And as you can see today, this moment being recognized by the city of San Jose means the world to us. San Jose is a vibrant and an inclusive community, leaders like Councilmember Domingo Candelaus, who has recently attended our Diwali ceremony, and as you can see through his appointments, exemplifies representative leadership. Councilmember, your actions make us feel seen, valued, and included. Mayor Matt Mahan and City Councilmember Domingo Candelaus, on behalf of the Sikh community, thank you for your ongoing support and visits to our Sikh temple. We look forward to the growth of the city of San Jose and your ongoing friendship with the Sikh community. Thank you so much.
And now, I believe Harvinder is going to share a few words as well, right?
I'm going to start with the Sikh greetings. Waheguru Jee Khaal Sa, Waheguru Jee Ki Fateh. Honorable mayor, city council members, and distinguished guests and friends, it's a privilege to be here today to celebrate Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. For those of you who don't know about Sikhism or Sikhhi, it's a special tradition founded over 555 years ago in Punjab, South Asia, and there are about 25 million followers worldwide. Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion, second to the United States in the late 1800s, and today, there are estimated about 750,000 Sikhs in America, with the largest communities in California, New York. The largest communities in California, New York, and California. I have tried to engage the students and schools for every possible occasion I can, the proclamations, invocations. In that vein, the last year, I had Leland High School students perform their choir, perform the invocation at the city hall. This year, I'm proud to have the string quartet from another school, which is the Pioneer High School. The music department at Pioneer is comprised of two bands, two orchestras, a jazz band, and a choir. These ensembles perform throughout the year at a number of school and community events, including appearances at Santa Cruz Jazz Festival and the Forum Music Festival in Anaheim. The string quartet we see here today is made up of seniors from Pioneer's Chamber Orchestra. This class in particular focuses both on larger orchestral works and including classical and modern pieces, as well as student-led small groups. These small groups appreciate the opportunity to perform for the community and can be seen playing music in rest homes, at concerts, and events like this. I thank the members of the string quartet for being with us today to provide us with a beautiful melody to layman our day. Led by Laura Levy, the music director with the Pioneer Music Department, for the past eight years, Laura is bassoonist in her spare time and can be seen performing with San Jose Band Symphony and advocating for the inclusion of elementary, visual, and performing arts in San Jose Unified School District. She has shared that she is so proud of the kind, inquisitive, and responsible student she gets to interact with every day and is thankful for the support of the program offered by the community. Thank you, Ms. Levy. Thank you again to the students with the Pioneer High School. Let's sit back and enjoy the beautiful music from these talented young individuals.
(Music)
(Applause)
Well, thank you, Councilor Batra, for arranging this, and thank you to the Pioneer High School String Quartet. Thanks for sharing your talent with us. That was beautiful. All right, we are on to ceremonial items. Councilwoman Davis, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim November as Janet Gray Hayes Month.
I think we have some special guests coming down, and I think my female colleagues are going to join me. Yes.
Can I just invite Mayor Janet Gray Hayes?
Yes. Today, we honor an amazing San Jose leader and a woman many of us look up to as a strong defender of our neighborhoods in San Jose. Janet Gray Hayes was a force and a mentor to so many. She broke the glass ceiling by being the first woman elected as mayor of a major U.S. city in 1974, 50 years ago. I have to mention, we've only had one other woman elected as mayor in San Jose since then, and that was Susan Hammer. Mayor Hayes wanted to fight urban sprawl, and she supported district elections where neighbors were able to vote for candidates who lived in their areas, true representation. This honoring of Mayor Hayes is long overdue and is thanks to the advocacy of her former colleagues, friends, and family. Not only are we honoring Mayor Hayes with this month dedicated to her, but we have also named the city rotunda after her. In fact, we'll be hosting a naming reception today in the Janet Gray Hayes Rotunda at 5:00 p.m., and everyone is welcome to join us. Now, I, along with Mayor Mahan and our colleagues on the city council, proclaim November as Janet Gray Hayes Month in San Jose. And I'd like to welcome Mayor Hayes's daughters, Lindy Hayes, Megan Hayes, and Katherine Hayes-Rodriguez, to say a few words and then accept this proclamation on their families' behalf. Who's first?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this amazing honor for our wonderful mother, who was a tireless advocate for all things San Jose. We are just very, very honored and humbled by this designation of November as Janet Gray Hayes Month, and we will be here on an annual basis to celebrate with you all. Thank you.
This is so great. We're so thrilled. We just wish Mom was here, and go November. Yeah.
Yes, anybody still here, come join us at the rotunda at 5:00 p.m. for the official unveiling and dedication. Next, Councilwoman Candelaus, if you would join me here at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim November as Sikh American Awareness Month, and we'll invite leaders from the Sikh community to come on down.
All right, come on and fill in behind me. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and get started. I just want to say, happy Tuesday, everybody. The mayor and I are excited to recognize and proclaim November as Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month. District 8 is home to one of the largest Sikh American communities in the state and the largest Sikh gurdwara outside of India. Every day, our city benefits from the work and leadership of our Sikh American neighbors, whether they are small business owners or part of Silicon Valley's tech innovation. Sikh American families have been essential to the success of San Jose and California. The Sikh faith is one of the largest religions in the world with an estimated 20 million followers. They are strong believers in serving the community, practicing the core values of seva, selfless service and justice. For decades, Sikh Americans have profoundly impacted San Jose, contributing to our diverse culture and social fabric. This November, let us come together to celebrate the culture, heritage, and faith of our Sikh brothers and sisters, in addition to Janet Gray Hayes Month. Accepting the proclamation today is District 8 Planning Commissioner Dilpree Bundal. Dilpree is the first Sikh American to serve as a San Jose Planning Commissioner in over 20 years and is a strong champion for neighboring our city. I'm happy to invite Dilpree Bundal to share a few words, and he's also an Evergreen Valley High School alum, so kudos to him. But Dilpree, share a few words, and then pass it on.
Thank you, Mayor Matt Mahan, and thank you, Councilmember Domingo Candelaus. The Sikh religion was founded in the 15th century in the northern Indian subcontinent by Guru Nanak Devji. Many Sikhs have now left their homes in India in a search for a better life, and many of them have chosen to settle in San Jose. We've left behind our family, our friends, our homes, and San Jose is our new shahar. Shahar means "city," the city of San Jose. With 60% of Sikhs being first generation and the remaining 40% being second and third generation, we love San Jose. And as you can see today, this moment being recognized by the city of San Jose means the world to us. San Jose is a vibrant and an inclusive community, leaders like Councilmember Domingo Candelaus, who has recently attended our Diwali ceremony, and as you can see through his appointments, it exemplifies representative leadership. Councilmember, your actions make us feel seen, valued, and included. Mayor Matt Mahan and City Councilmember Domingo Candelaus, on behalf of the Sikh community, thank you for your ongoing support and visits to our Sikh temple. We look forward to the growth of the city of San Jose and your ongoing friendship with the Sikh community. Thank you so much.
And now, I believe Harvinder is going to share a few words as well, right? Harvinder?
I'm going to start with the Sikh greetings. Waheguru Jee Khaal Sa, Waheguru Jee Ki Fateh. Honorable mayor, city council members, and distinguished guests and friends, it's a privilege to be here today to celebrate Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. For those of you who don't know about Sikhism or Sikhhi, it's a special tradition founded over 555 years ago in Punjab, South Asia, and there are about 25 million followers worldwide. Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion, second to the United States in the late 1800s, and today, there are estimated about 750,000 Sikhs in America, with the largest communities in California, New York. in addition to Janet Gray Hayes Month. Accepting the proclamation today is District Eight Planning Commissioner Dilpreet Bandal. Dilpreet is the first Sikh American to serve as a San Jose Planning Commissioner in over 20 years and is a strong champion for neighboring our city. I'm happy to invite Dilpreet Bandal to share a few words, and he's also an Evergreen Valley High School alum, so kudos to him. But Dilpreet, share a few words and then pass it on.
Thank you, Mayor Matt Mahan, and thank you Councilmember Domingo Candelaus. The Sikh religion was founded in the 15th century in the northern Indian subcontinent by Guru Nanak Devji. Many Sikhs have now left their homes in India in a search for a better life, and many of them have chosen to settle in San Jose. We've left behind our family, our friends, our homes, and San Jose is our new shehar. Shehar means "city," the city of San Jose. With 60% of Sikhs being first generation and the remaining 40% being second and third generation, we love San Jose. And as you can see today, this moment being recognized by the city of San Jose means the world to us. San Jose is a vibrant and an inclusive community. Leaders like Councilmember Domingo Candelaus, who has recently attended our Diwali ceremony, and as you can see through his appointments, exemplifies representative leadership. Councilmember, your actions make us feel seen, valued, and included. Mayor Matt Mahan and City Councilmember Domingo Candelaus, on behalf of the Sikh community, thank you for your ongoing support and visits to our Sikh temple. We look forward to the growth of the city of San Jose and your ongoing friendship with the Sikh community. Thank you so much.
And now, I believe Harvinder is gonna share a few words as well, right?
I'm gonna start with the Sikh greetings. Waheguru Jee Kha Khaal Sa, Waheguru Jee Ki Fate. Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and distinguished guests and friends. It's a privilege to be here today to celebrate Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. For those of you who don't know about Sikhism or Sikhhi, it's a special tradition founded over 555 years ago in Punjab, South Asia, and there are about 25 million followers worldwide. Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion, second to the United States in the late 1800s. And today, there are estimated about 750,000 Sikhs in America, with the largest communities in California, New York, and Washington. Sikhs has been integral to American society for over a century, with the first Sikh gurdwara in the US established in Stockton in 1912. Have any of you heard the name of Dilip Singh Sondh? Dilip Singh Sondh was the first US Congressman who was a Sikh, who was the first representative of South Asia in 1956. He was the first US Congressman. Have any of you heard about Pagt Singh Tend? He was a Sikh soldier who fought in the First World War. He was the first Sikh to get the United States citizenship on 18th November, that was the day before yesterday, in 1918. Most of us remember 9/11/2001. Most of us do. But what happened after 9/11? The first casualty after three days was a Sikh because he was wearing a turban on his head. His name was Balbir Singh Sodhi. So that's why it is important to do the Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month so that everyone knows who are the Sikhs. What do we believe in? Our prayer starts with Ek Oankar, which means "the God is one." Our Guru Granth Sahib, our holy scripture, say, Manas Ki Jaat Sabey Ek E Pehchan Bo. What it means is, "The whole human race is one." And our ardas, our prayer, ends with Sarvat Dapala, welfare of all. So 90% of the people you will see outside with a turban on their head, you can imagine they are Sikhs. And the other thing they have around is, like, you know, this bracelet, we call it kadda. And this is to remind us that God is watching you, whether you are doing something good or whether you are doing something bad. So God is always watching you. So that's my only, like, you know, the FBI had a recent data last year which says the Sikhs, you know, hate crimes are at the top. We are second after Jews. So please, we are here, we've been here over a century, and we are the Sikhs, and we are here to help. Whenever there is need, and when you see us outside, and we have the biggest gurdwara in San Jose outside America. It is on 40 acres. If any of you haven't, please come visit and get to know us. Thank you very much. I really appreciate this awareness and appreciation. Thank you.
Now, Mayor, will you present the proclamation, please?
Thank you. Alright, on to our third and final ceremonial item, and I would like to invite our representative from the United States Department of Commerce, as well as the representatives of companies in our foreign trade zone to come on down. We will be recognizing the 50th anniversary of the San Jose Foreign Trade Zone. Big milestone. As folks come down, I'll start my comments in the interest of time. Welcome. Today, we are recognizing and celebrating the 50th anniversary of San Jose's Foreign Trade Zone. On November 27th, 1974, the United States Department of Commerce approved the city's application to establish the San Jose Foreign Trade Zone, which includes San Jose and all of Santa Clara County, as well as Santa Cruz, Scotts Valley, and Southern Alameda County. A foreign trade zone is a site outside of the United States Customs Area that allows foreign merchandise to be admitted directly into the foreign trade zone duty-free. When Congress created foreign trade zones 90 years ago, they were largely at the nation's leading seaports and were limited to storage, warehousing, and distribution of foreign merchandise. Since then, manufacturing and production, from testing to assembly, have helped increase the value and importance of foreign trade zones. San Jose's Foreign Trade Zone has facilitated investment, manufacturing, trade, and employment in San Jose and the broader region. Last year, San Jose's Foreign Trade Zone was one of the top-performing trade zones in the country, with companies accounting for $25.5 billion in activity, $6.2 billion in exports, and 30,000 employees, driving economic growth and international trade. Today, with my colleagues on the City Council, I am pleased to present a commendation to the United States Department of Commerce and to eight companies represented here today that operate their business as part of San Jose's Foreign Trade Zone and have contributed to our city and region's growth as we celebrate 50 years of this important initiative in San Jose and the broader region. The companies in our Foreign Trade Zone represented here today include, and Joe Hedges is gonna kindly help me hand out the commendations as I announce them. Maxar Space, or do you want me to hand them out?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll be handing them out. Do you want to list them, Joe? You hand them out, I'll list them. Division of Labor, come on. Maxar Space, Lamb Research Corporation, Tesla Incorporated, RK Logistics, Bloom Energy Corporation, Epoch International Enterprises, Seand, Seand Inc., and ISE Labs, Inc. These companies represent industry sectors and emerging technologies critical to our economic future: commercial satellites, electric vehicles, semiconductors, energy, and electronic components. I also want to thank our Office of Economic Development for helping to coordinate today's, not just today's event, but this trade zone and facilitating this partnership for decades now, especially Joe Hedges, our International Programs Manager, who's been managing this program for many years on behalf of the city. Now, I would like to invite a representative from Maxar Space, which is the longest-tenured company in our Foreign Trade Zone, Frank Pelkifer, who will, he is the Vice President of Spacecraft Assembly Integration and Test Team, it's a pretty cool title, to say a few words. Frank?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, on behalf of all of the companies who are participating in the Foreign Trade Zone, I want to express our appreciation for all of the people and all of the relationships that are necessary to allow us to establish, maintain, and alter our Foreign Trade Zone as our business needs change. 50 years is quite a milestone. We've been participating for almost 20 years now, and the Foreign Trade Zone has really been an enabler for us to allow us to invest more of our funds into our employees and our aerospace products that would have otherwise gone to duty and taxes. A couple of kind of unique events that the Foreign Trade Zone has helped us out with over the years. There was a time a couple of years back where we actually were donating a spacecraft from our facility to the Air and Space Museum in Washington DC, and so that required a lot of interaction. We've also done a couple of activities where we were manufacturing our hardware at a US government customer facility, so NASA or JPL, and so we really appreciate your efforts there. So, just in closing, I want to thank the Board of the Foreign Trade Zone, Customs and Border Protection, the US Department of Commerce. Special thanks to Joe Hedges, our grantee, and of course, Mayor Mahan. So, thank you very much.
Next, I would like to invite Joanne Valiet, Representative from the US Department of Commerce, who's the Director here in Silicon Valley, to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Joanne Valiet. I'm the Director of the US Commercial Service Silicon Valley Office here, representing the Department of Commerce International Trade Administration today. And the Foreign Trade Zone Board is an office under the International Trade Administration. I could not be more pleased and honored to be joining this really important event today, and I just want to congratulate the companies for their enormous economic impact here in Silicon Valley. And we welcome many more companies in the community to join the Foreign Trade Zone Program. The partnership between private industry, the local and state and city government to promote trade and investment in the United States and Silicon Valley is absolutely critical. And we have been delighted to play a role in that here today. So, thanks again and congratulations.
Thank you, Director Valiet. We have a commendation for you as well. Thank you. We're gonna take a big group photo, but if we can shift this way, the podium likes to get in the way. Alright, we are on to Orders of the Day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I have one small one. Let me see if there are any others. Okay, not seeing any others, I would like to suggest one. Due to changes in the staff recommendations in Item 2.10 regarding grant agreements for multiple unsheltered homelessness programs, we will need to entertain a motion here under Orders of the Day to amend the recommendation to reflect what is in the current agenda, and this would require a two-thirds vote to do. And then I know that item is also, I believe Councilor Botra will pull that item for discussion under the consent calendar. So it would be a two-thirds vote to amend the agenda today, that item, to reflect what's currently agendized. May I have such a motion?
I would so move.
Great. Thank you. So, Tony, let's vote on that. I assume, do you have any comment cards on that item? Okay, let's vote on that, then.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. And then I didn't see anything else under Orders of the Day, so we'll move on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're on to the consent calendar, and as I understand it, Councilor Botra, did you still want to pull Item 2.10? Okay. Did anyone else want to pull any other items, just so I'm aware? Okay, floor is yours, Councilmember.
Anybody from the housing here to answer the question?
I see our Housing Director heading on down.
Thank you very much, Eric. We invest a lot of money in terms of getting these people off the street and put them into interim housing or other facilities to rebuild their life. I think one of the things which we either are doing it or we need to be, I suggest do, that when they graduate out of our facility, whatever we call graduation is for them, having the caseworker track them for a certain length of time to know how they have readjusted back into life, okay? Do we do any tracking at all, or we, the day they graduate, they've basically gone out of our sight and there's no information available about them being successful in readjusting in life?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Eric Sullivan, Housing Director. To the question, we do not, after graduation, which is the outcome, whether they've moved into permanent housing, or as an example with the Yes Day Bridge Program, they moved into permanent employment post-graduation, we do not track those outcomes. That is something we're not opposed to doing, but we certainly would need resources to extend out the existing case management or supportive services that are needed in order to execute on that request.
Yeah, so please consider if we can find either the caseworker, because typically, all of these people have caseworkers. If the caseworkers can report back for a certain length of time, I don't know what that is, to make sure that these people have graduated in a proper way and gotten back into the society the way they should be able to live comfortably and be productive member of the community, okay? So, that would be my suggestion here, and please consider that, how we can get there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Councilor, would you like to move the consent calendar as a whole?
Yes, I make motion to accept the consent calendar.
Great. Do we have any public comment?
We have no comment cards.
Okay, let's vote.
Still waiting on one vote. Oh.
He's back.
Motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Alright, thank you. We're now on to land use consent. Questions, comments, or a motion? Motion from Foley. Did we have a second? Thank you. Do we have any public comment on land use consent?
No cards.
Okay, let's vote. Still seem to be missing one. Did we lose another? Or we, there we go. Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Tony. Alright, on to the regular agenda, starting with Item 3.1.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a report out today.
Great, thank you. Alright, we're on to Item 3.3, which is the Tenant Protection Ordinance Audit Report, and I believe we have a brief staff presentation. Joe, feel free to jump in when you're ready.
Good afternoon. Joe Roy, City Auditor. I'm here with Allison Pauly, Maria Vae, and Hawad Hyder from our office to present the Audit of the Tenant Protection Ordinance. Housing should refine its fee calculation process and standardize procedures to improve program administration. Also in the box are Eric Sullivan and Emily Hislop from the Housing Department. In 2017, the City Council passed the Tenant Protection Ordinance, or TPO, to promote housing stability and fairness within the residential rental market. The TPO protects tenants in multiple housing units from unjustified fictions by limiting terminations to 13 just causes. And the Housing Department administers the TPO as part of its rent stabilization program. Property owners of covered units are charged a fee for housing administration of the TPO. And San Jose has a two-tier system, two-tier fee system, that is, a lower fee for TPO-only units and a higher fee for multiple housing units covered by both the TPO and the city's apartment rent ordinance. In recent years, housing has sought to increase the TPO-only fee to reflect the full cost administering the program, and the objective of this audit was to review the assessment and use of TPO fees, and it was conducted in response to a request by council. We have three findings. The first finding is that housing should develop a standard roster of TPO units and better document the fee calculation process. The current process to identify TPO-only units is complicated and labor-intensive, and has led to errors in the past. In its most recent count, housing estimated 48,000 TPO-only units in San Jose. However, this included about 6,450 hotel and motel rooms, which should have been exempt. The count of TPO-only units in past fee calculations has fluctuated because of the inclusion of properties that should not have been included, as well as ongoing data cleaning. In addition, property exemptions from the TPO can be better clarified in communications with landlords, and better tracking of staff time would further improve the accuracy of the TPO-only fee calculation. To improve the fee calculation process, we had recommendations for housing to develop a standard roster or database of TPO-only properties excluding hotels and motels, document and clarify the methodology for identifying TPO and exempt properties, and formalize procedures to track staff time across the different rent stabilization program areas. Second finding is that standard procedures and data collection would enhance the TPO performance management. A key part of implementing the TPO is providing landlords and tenants with information to ensure compliance and exercise their rights. Rent stabilization program staff documented about 1,500 TPO-related interactions with tenants and landlords across 600 properties in 2023. However, the Rent Stabilization Program's Procedures Manual does not currently contain, or not at the time of the audit, contains specific guidance on managing TPO-related interactions and enforcement. And current data collection can be improved, and performance measures should be developed to better enable staff to assess program effectiveness. In this finding, we had recommendations for housing to update its rent stabilization program procedures manual, enhance its interaction log data collection, and develop measures to assess performance of TPO activities. Our last finding is that outreach education coordination efforts should be more proactive and data-driven. The Rent Stabilization conducts outreach across the city to educate stakeholders about the TPO and related ordinances. Adopting a data-driven approach to identify and target high-need areas could improve the program's outreach. There also appears to be gaps in landlord awareness of their obligations under the TPO. And last thing, housing and the fire department can improve communications to tenants displaced after fires or other incidents. In this finding, we had recommendations for housing to identify high-need areas for outreach and address gaps in landlord's knowledge of the TPO, and collaborate with fire to update materials provided to tenants displaced by incidents. The report has 12 recommendations to refine the fee calculation process and improve program administration. I'd like to thank the Housing Department, the City Attorney's Office, Planning, Building, Code Enforcement, and the Fire Department for their time and insight during the process. I ask that you accept the report. We're available for questions, but first I'll turn it over to Eric for the administration's response. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Eric Sullivan, Housing Director. And we accept the findings and the report. And I've already been moving forward on executing the resolutions.
Great. Thank you both. Appreciate the report and the administration's response. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Emily Ramos.
Do I start?
Yes.
I start. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Emily Ann Ramos with SB at Home. We are in support of all the recommendations. We thank the city for taking the time to work on improving the Tenant Protection Ordinance. It's an important tool that the city can use to prevent displacement in our cities. We should note that the Housing Department is one of the major departments that addresses the needs of low-income communities in your city. And that is where there's a mandate to do so. And so the Tenant Protection Ordinance is critical to that, so we thank you for taking the time to work on improving it and investing into it and ensuring that our residents here are safe from evictions and displacement. Thank you so much for your time. Good job.
Back to council.
Great, thank you. Coming back to the council, we'll start with Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to thank our city auditor and the Housing Department for their collaboration on this good item. Some quick questions. So on page 19 of the audit, the report notes, "When rent stabilization program staff learn of TPO noncompliance, they mostly address it by informally reaching out to landlords via phone and email." I wanted to ask, based on insights from staff, is staff logging informal enforcement actions such as warnings or educational outreach to track any sort of landlord behavior? That's to the Housing Department.
In reference to that, much of the time, so we review notices that are not notices to pay, because that's the large majority. And if there's an owner move-in notice, say, that's not, doesn't have all the requisite information, staff will reach out to the owner, let them know, and most of the time it's, it results in them remedying the situation. We try to encourage resolution on the part of the parties before any enforcement actions. If something rises to the level of a letter or needing to take extra steps, we do, we document all this in our database and our interaction logs, and we also keep files. But I don't think we've had anything that, at least since I've been there, where an owner refuses to comply where we would be able to take some enforcement action. We also refer out to legal aid organizations when appropriate, if there's no resolution.
Thank you. And I know you had mentioned that, as of now, the Housing Department hasn't witnessed repeated violations, but if there was, what sort of teeth does the department have to enforce the TPO?
There are civil remedies within the TPO. I believe we have authority to issue citations as well, but I don't know if there is a citation schedule has been put forth yet since the TPO was adopted. As part of the response to the recommendations, we are dusting off draft TPO regulations. The pandemic disrupted a lot of work, and that's one of the things that would be addressed in those regulations that we are currently working on now with the City Attorney's Office.
So I mean, since there hasn't been a citation administered since the start of the TPO, should we assume that a majority of property owners are complying with the TPO? Or is it that, I don't know, we're not, we're not known of any sort of violations?
Where anybody who's contacted our program about noncompliance, the issue gets resolved. We don't know about owners who are not in compliance that we're not aware of.
All right, thank you so much. Another question, on page 30 of the audit, I see that the auditor did a survey of landlords where respondents reported that they were not familiar with aspects of the TPO, or their ability to contact housing for information about the TPO. Is there a plan to survey tenants to ensure they've received necessary information from their landlords?
Yes, so as part of the Rent Stabilization Strategic Plan, it calls for expanded communications and improved communications with both tenants and landlords to ensure continuing compliance with the program regulations.
Okay, thank you. Wanted to ask, what is currently being done to ensure that tenants who experience no-fault evictions, to make sure that they're receiving relocation assistance as required by the TPO?
Similar to reviewing the notices, we work with both parties. We follow up with the tenant, with the owner, and if there's resistance to complying with the relocation obligations, tenants are connected with legal aid, low-income legal aid services.
So the best of our ability, of our knowledge, right? The best of our knowledge is there hasn't been any violation of this?
Much like my response before, for the ones we're aware of, where they haven't complied with, we've worked towards helping the tenant resolve it, but we're not aware of owners who aren't following, that we are, we're not contacted by a tenant or informed otherwise.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Sorry to ask repetitive questions, it's just for the record, just to make sure that I have these questions answered. So on page 30 of the audit, it says that the Rent Stabilization Program Outreach Team primarily engages stakeholders by participating in community and school events. Given the recommendation to do more strategic outreach, are there any plans to increase the number of in-person events, such as workshops or clinics, to ensure that tenants know their rights?
So as this audit was being conducted, we were actually in the process of developing a very robust outreach strategy, which involved more intentional outreach, like working with the ELAC, the language, I forget the acronym, in school districts where we go to cafecitos, we go to these parent, you know, school-led events, and just there for questions and other outreach. So there is one component of outreach that's just tabling and making ourselves known, and then there's more intentional where we reach out to specific organizations where we know there's families and low-income renters.
I appreciate that, and I think what you touched on regarding language access, that's key. Many of my renters in my district are Spanish or Vietnamese-speaking, depending on the apartment complex. Look forward to seeing you guys out more in the community, and let me know if there's anything I could do to amplify the message. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member. Let's go to Councilmember Davis next.
Thank you. Really appreciate this audit and appreciate housing's candor in their, in their response. I have to say, it was a little bit surprising in, under Recommendation 5, the administration's response about how program staff is having trouble properly accounting for their time on the TPO program versus other programs when filling out their employee time card, and having to consider how to capture the time, because the fee is supposed to be a fee of cost recovery. And so knowing this now, I, I know I won't be here, but asking the question, the target date for completion of the new process is April 30th, so that will be in the middle of the budget process. What is the fee going to look like for FY '26, and how will you calculate it, knowing now that we haven't had good data in the past and won't have good data until sometime after April 30th?
Thank you, council member. For, to the question, they're anticipating no increases to the current fee because we're going through this data analysis now to better allocate and understand what is the allocation of time across all staff, in addition to better understanding what is overall productivity rates across all staff. So at this point, leading up to April, since the implementation of that plan will not be done until then, the execution in terms of the time allocation, we anticipate that there'll be no increases, fees will remain largely flat.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I do think some of the, the questions to Councilmember Ortiz, or some of the answers to Councilmember Ortiz's question will be addressed kind of when you get through Recommendation 6, which is updating the Rent Stabilization Program Manual. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks. I appreciate that. I don't think anybody's moved approval of the audit report yet, so I'll make that motion.
Great, thank you, council member. Okay, I don't see any other hands, so I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We're on to, thank you all, we're on to item 3.4, Public Member Appointments to the Board of Administration for Federated City Employees Retirement System and the Board of Administration for the Police and Fire Department Retirement Plan.
Hi, we have--
Tony, do you want to, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to tell us how this, how this will go?
Spencer Horowitz, David Kwan, and Gretchen Fletcher, please come on down. Spencer Horowitz is interviewing for the federated seat. He is the incumbent. He is the only applicant here for that one. David Kwan is interviewing for the public member seat of the Police and Fire Department. He is also the only applicant for that position. And then Gretchen Fletcher is the applicant for the board-nominated public member seat, and she has been approved by the board to move to you, and she's the only applicant for that position. So it's up to you if you want to interview them. So Spencer and David are incumbents, and Gretchen is the board-nominated person, and they are sitting in the box if you'd like to question them.
Okay. And sorry, Tony, I was briefly distracted there for a moment. What was the next step here? Are we starting with statements?
So the next step is you guys can start asking them questions if you want them to start with a statement.
Why don't we start with brief statements? Thank you.
Let me repeat, Spencer and David are both currently incumbents, and Gretchen is the board-nominated.
Great. Yes, council. Okay, that's fine with me. Why don't we go to Councilmember Davis first?
Thank you. I want to thank all three of you for your service. Councilmember Foley and I have, are the liaisons to the federated and police and fire, respectively. And we've, we've been grateful for our incumbents' service, and I know that Councilmember Foley has also been, participated in the board's interviewing of Gretchen Fletcher. So I will just make the motion to reappoint both Mr. Horowitz and Mr. Kwan, and to appoint Ms. Fletcher to their respective boards.
All right, we're going to make it easy on you guys. It's your lucky day. All right, let me see if there are other questions or comments from other colleagues, but I appreciate you expediting that, council member, given everything else on our agenda and your experience and working relationship with everyone here. Why don't we turn to, Councilmember Foley, did you want to add any commentary?
Just briefly, thank you. Gretchen, I look forward to working with you on the Police and Fire Board, and David, I look forward to having you back. Thank you. Thank you all for your service.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Batra.
I appreciate that the nomination is made, that we want to, that the, if these candidates have appeared here for interview, I think it's disrespectful if we don't give them the chance to have their interview be done and they make their statement. I appreciate it will be saving us time, but I don't think it is the right thing when we publicize, this is what we are going to do, and we short-chain the process. I disagree with that. I will not be able to support the process which has been recommended here.
Well, yeah, I appreciate the, appreciate the commentary. Why don't, why don't we just do this in the spirit of moving forward together and trying to do it efficiently, but giving you all a moment? If you would like to each take a minute or two to share why you want to serve, or share a little bit about your experience already serving on these boards and why you want to continue, that would be great. If anyone has burning questions, I'm happy to take them before someone calls the question, but we should keep moving along. So Spencer, you're closest to the dais. Do you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. Five years ago, I was first appointed as a trustee to the board. At that time, our, at the federated board, our five-year annualized rate of return was 3.2%, significantly below our assumed rate of return. Today, our five-year annualized rate of return is 8.5%, significantly above our assumed rate of return. Consequently, our funded ratio has increased from 53% five years ago to 61% today. We still have a lot of room for improvement, but we are making improvements and moving in the right direction. So I appreciate the opportunity to continue my work. I'm the second-longest-serving federated trustee and was honored by my fellow trustees to be elected chair for the last three years. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Spencer. David?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I've been a trustee since June of 2022, so I've served for two and a half years, not quite a full term. It's been an honor for me to serve and to make a contribution to the board. Just a couple of observations, you know, we have a great group of trustees that work well together, and we take our role from a fiduciary and ethics point of view very seriously, and we all work toward improving the status of the plan. We made great strides, as Spencer has mentioned, in improving the unfunded liabilities of the plan, but I agree with Spencer, there's still more work to be done. As a retired investment professional, I think that my contribution to the plan will be more impactful moving forward, especially once I rotate into the investment committee. It's taken me a while, but I'm going to get there eventually. I think they say you have to wait three years, but I've only been serving for two and a half. So as such, I'm looking forward to continuing my work here. So thank you again for the opportunity, and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, David. And Gretchen?
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and thank you for having me here today. I am looking forward to serving on the Police and Fire Retirement Board. I believe this board is critical to fulfilling the commitments that we have made to important members of our community who provide critical services to us every day. As a retired investment professional, I think this is one of the best ways that I can give back, and my goal in retirement has been giving back to my community in various ways, and so I look forward to doing just that.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you to all of you for being here, for seeking to serve, already serving on the boards, Spencer and David. And let me just see if colleagues have any questions or we're ready to vote. Have questions from any colleagues? Councilmember? No? Anyone else? No? Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you all again. I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you all. Congratulations. All right, we are on to item 3.5, amendments to the Microsoft-related enterprise licenses and service agreements. I understand Councilor Batra will need to recuse himself, so we'll grab you when we're done with this item. Is anyone else? No? Okay.
Do I have to state the reason?
Nora, is it helpful if the councilor states the reason?
You should just indicate.
That's what I remembered last time, so that's why I, yes, I have a conflict of interest that I own shares in the Microsoft Corporation.
Got it. Financial interest. Okay, got it. We'll grab you in just a moment. Okay. So the items are agendas. Hopefully, everyone has read the materials. Do we have comments? Councilmember, actually, I'm sorry, let me first go to public comment. I apologize. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Not for this item.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Davis?
Thank you. Do we have somebody here for the contract? Call it. I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. It's a, it's a quick question. I don't think I'll need three people, but so the total not to exceed amount goes from 14.5 to 31.2. So that difference is for the five years. Is that correct? It's not an additional 31.2 million?
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. I'll be your deputy director of finance. Yes, it's not extra. It's a total.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's my only question. I'll move approval.
Great, thank you. I just had maybe a couple of quick questions. I know when we did our renewal a few years ago, we had a few questions. I remember Councilor Davis and then Mayor Liccardo asking some great questions. And just wanted to understand how we ensure cost control and maybe more importantly, that we are getting value in terms of the functionality the team is using, because it's a very robust suite of tools, of course. But my sense is that we don't all need the same level of functionality, and I just wonder how we negotiate with Microsoft to get the best possible value for these, what are now pretty substantial contracts going forward, given that some workers may need a very robust set of tools and others of us may be limited to Word and Excel and email and calendar, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Mayor. Call it, Dr. Chief Information Officer. We always look at the utilization and the different options we have from other vendors that might provide similar solution that might be more cost-effective. And also within the range of licenses with Microsoft, there are different tiers. And based on the usage and utilization, we negotiate how we can move people around to make sure that we maximize the benefits and the services being rendered and purchased. Also, we have a good control to terminate accounts when they're no longer being used and services no longer being rendered, and that's one of the things we also look at, especially with things, services we provide or we utilize in the cloud where sometimes the account, the clock continues to count even though we're not using it. So these are some of the things to help us control, but also we negotiate with Microsoft, which is, this is really to delegate the authority for the city manager to negotiate. But when we extend the next five, part of the conversation, what kind of discounts, what kind of benefits the city can get from some of the new services that we can take advantage of.
Okay, so you bring that utilization data to the table when you have the conversations about pricing?
Correct.
Okay. And then, if I recall correctly, I think it was in 2021 when we extended the contract. I'm pretty sure it was Councilor Davis who made the motion or seconded Mayor Liccardo's. I believe we had asked for a side-by-side comparison of different service providers. Obviously, there are limited options here, but there was at least some discussion of Microsoft and Google's suites of tools for employees. Did that evaluation ever occur? I don't recall that coming back to council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council members. Sean Ratchford, Deputy CIO for Business Solutions. Yes, that did occur. The assessment was completed and it was presented at the Smart Cities Committee. So that's where all that information was shared. And it was a comparison between Microsoft and Google and with a, sharing all the considerations as well as what it would take to move from one vendor to another.
Okay, and I assume that the results of that analysis were baked into the recommendation you're bringing forward today?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'll ask one final question. Would it, maybe it's two. Is there any logic in pursuing a sort of two-tiered system where those of us using much simpler functionality might be able to pilot, say, the Google suite and use those tools at a lower cost, given that our needs are maybe less robust, while maintaining core systems for teams like finance and others on the existing tech stack? Is that something you all have explored? Is that worth considering?
Thank you, Mayor. We did explore some of these options. The challenge is whenever we support multiple platforms, then we have to hire, train, and maintain different skillsets. And also, we have to integrate the new platform with the existing one, otherwise people don't know where the documents will reside and what system, and it makes it really challenging when we have issues like e-discovery and things of that nature. We're always looking to see how we can improve services, lower our costs, and increase efficiency, but sometimes that comes with a cost of labor, and labor is not very cheap in the city.
Yeah, I mean, I share that concern. It certainly adds some complexity, though I think for many of us on the 18th floor, for example, it's about as simple as kind of file sharing. Otherwise, I don't know that there's, you know, real robust needs where we're hooking into big enterprise systems, but maybe that's a discussion for another day. Would staff be amenable to coming back at the half-term to give an update on where we are with utilization and costs?
Absolutely. We can count this and come back to provide the report and status.
Okay, and I'm okay if it goes to a committee or it's an information memo. It doesn't have to be agendas at the full council. I'd just love to get an update at some point, just because these are big contracts and technology changes quickly. Okay, great. I think, did we have the motion, councilmember? You made it, didn't you? Okay, great. I don't see any other hands, so why don't we vote?
Motion passes unanimously with Batra recused.
Okay, great. Would someone, thank you all, would someone please go back and grab Councilor Batra? Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we are on to item 3.6, annual merit increases and additional executive leave for council appointees. Again, anybody following along can find all the details in the agenda. Do we have any public comment, Tony?
There are no cards. Move approval.
No cards.
Second.
Okay. And we will wait for our colleagues to come out before we vote. Did we lose him? There we go. All right. All right, let's vote on item 3.6.
Still waiting on one. I don't know who it is, though. Motion passes unanimously.
No, I can't see it. Okay, great. Thank you all. All right, excellent. We're on to item 3.7. This is the District III upcoming vacancy. And everyone should have, obviously, the materials and their agenda. We also have council memos. Why don't we start with public comment and then we'll come back for discussion? Tony, you're not presenting anything on this?
I'm here for questions.
That's right.
My memo is up.
Great. So questions will go to Tony or Nora presumably, but we'll start with public comment.
Okay, when I call your name, I want you to come down, you'll come to the podium. You'll have two minutes to speak. There's, there'll be a timer up on display. There's also a timer on the podium itself. When I call your name, you can, first person in the microphone starts speaking. Everybody else can sit in the first row where it says reserved. I have Chuck Cantrell, Jeff Levine, Krista Hamby, and Mina Nieto to start. Again, that's Chuck, Jeff, Krista, and Mina. Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, friends. I'm actually here today to encourage you to do something that you might find difficult, that may be counterintuitive even. I'm asking that this decision about how we proceed either on a special election or a temporary appointment, take some alternative consideration. I want you to think about the, I should start by saying, I know this is a difficult decision, and I think it's more difficult because you care, and I understand how important that care is. While you certainly didn't create this problem, it is actually yours to solve. You're given the power to solve this problem and to do an appointment. I think to spend $3 million on a special election, which is likely to be very low turnout, is likely going to disenfranchise the very people you're trying to protect. When we run these elections in such short periods of time, the outcome is generally the person who has the most money wins, and that is not how we do democracy. I know that you all want to make sure that an informed electorate is able to vote for a person who represents their community. The best way to ensure that outcome is to appoint someone temporarily until candidates can take the time to introduce themselves to their community and earn the trust and respect for people to make intelligent decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Levine. I'm a District III resident for close to 30 years, and in honor of Mayor Janet Gray Hayes, I want you to ensure that, that people in my district get to vote on who our representative will be. I don't want any backroom deals. I don't want any temporary appointments unless it's an interim appointment and a special election called at the same time. I know it's expensive, but nobody said democracy is easy, and it's the price that we have to pay. And that's the only solution. If you make an appointment and then we wait for another two years for that to come up for election, you're gonna have a lot of disgruntled people in District III. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Alex Stidinski and Ed Berger.
Good afternoon. My name's Krista Hamby. I have been a constituent of District III for 30 years. With the inclusion of the downtown core, I believe that District III has challenges and needs that are unique from other districts, and we as residents deserve the opportunity to have a say regarding who is representing us to address those challenges and needs. Frankly, I find it reprehensible that some council members are advocating to disenfranchise thousands of residents by appointing a person of the council's choice to represent us for two years. I just want to state that I support a special election to fill the District III council position. Any appointments should not be permanent, but only until a special election can be organized, and that special election should be organized as soon as possible. As an aside, listening to the council meeting today, I find it stunningly hypocritical that this council cited her work on advocating for district representation in your tribute to Mayor Janet Gray Hayes and are discussing taking away that representation from people in the same exact meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and esteemed council. My name is Minakshi Nieto. I'm a resident of District III. I reside at 742 North Sixth Street. I'm here to request that the mayor and the council, they consider option C, with an interim appointment, as well as followed with a quick election, a special election. This will ensure the voice as well as the vision of District III residents and the community as part of the progress of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Stephanie, it looks like Patterson, and Nancy DiMattei.
Mayor and council, I'm Alex Stidinski, CEO of the San Jose Downtown Association, which represents nearly 2,000 businesses and property owners in the downtown. We're greatly concerned about the lack of representation D3 has endured in the past months. D3 staff and the mayor's office have done an incredible job filling in, but we need somebody in that seat now. Regardless if council decides on special election or appointment, we need a strong representative now that cannot endure and cannot endure a gap of another six to nine months. We need someone who understands our downtown community, including our property owners, small businesses, and residents, and someone who's fully familiar with and supportive of the mayor's four focus areas when it comes to downtown's revitalization. The representative should not be polarizing, as the community needs someone who can lead the charge, united and will find a path of healing and recovery for our downtown. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Ed Berger with the Northside Neighborhood Association. I live in District III. I encourage the city council to authorize both an interim appointment and a special election to fill the D3 vacancy. I believe residents of D3 deserve to have their voices heard. I think the case could be made that D3 voters have an excellent record of choosing leaders who benefit both D3 and the entire city of San Jose. I think D3 is a proving ground or incubator for San Jose leaders with its broad diversity of residents, housing types, San Jose State, and the very important and critical downtown core. Several previous D3 council members have continued on to become mayor, including Tom McInnery, Susan Hammer, and Sam Liccardo. And several previous D3 council members have continued on to run for higher office, including David Pandori, Cindy Chavez, and Rol Peralas. So I recommend the city council authorize both an interim appointment and a special election for D3. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm also gonna call down Irene Smith and Dennis Kine.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Stephanie Patterson. I live in District III for the last 10 years. I'm also the vice president of the Vendome Neighborhood Association, and I am here to request that, that council will do a special election as soon as possible on the city council charter, whatever that minimum requirement is. I do understand that an appointment might need to be made in the interim. I would hope that maybe that would be done after the swearing-in of our new council members so that the current council might have that opportunity to make that choice as well. Again, hoping for a special election, though, as soon as allowable in the city charter. I also echo many of the sentiments of others who have spoken about, you know, District III and all of our, you know, everything that we need for our district, and it needs to be someone that's very in tune with all of that. So thank you so much for your choice. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also, Jose Posados and David Hindle, come on down.
Good afternoon. Hi, how are you guys doing? I'm just here to ask you to please do the right thing for District III and its constituents. Please vote so that we can have a special election and we can move forward to hopefully rebuilding some trust in the system. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Irene Smith, and I have been a resident of D3 and a small business- I'm Irene Smith, and I have been a resident of D3 and a small business owner for 35 years. And I came in second to Omar Torres in the city council election in 2022. If any district in San Jose, in the entire history of San Jose, has ever deserved a new election, it is D3 in downtown right now in 2024. Your goal in this special election is to move quickly, because the longer this process takes, the more influence you give to special interests and big money. Your second goal is to continue to being impartial. I thank you. As a council member, you understand the business of being an elected representative. Let me repeat, elected representative. Elected is not a bureaucrat that manages city staff. It's not someone who gets along with business and labor. It is not someone who understands how City Hall works. It is someone who is in touch with her community. It is someone who puts the community's interests first and works to understand relentlessly their perspectives and put them and their ideas into action. A fast, fair, and transparent election is the best way for D3 to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Roxanne and Kat.
Good afternoon. Wow, what a crowd, huh? Hey, it's time for another person to lead. You said it in the interview, Mayor Mahan. It's time for another to lead, someone else to lead, and it's today. We can settle this today, okay? One of you makes a motion to nominate Irene. She got 7,000 votes last time. 7,000 votes. You motioned to nominate her, you motioned to second her, and she only needs three votes today, and she's appointed on that temporary seat. That's all you gotta do. That's democracy, Mr. Bontre. I don't know what you're talking about. Over here, I heard a lady say today that the homeless people could go down to the legal aid pour, the cheap legal. We haven't had cheap legal aid here since Tony Estromera left for the San Jose Water Board. Those guys don't have any legal assistance, counselor. You need to get Gangster on them, please. Please.
All right, let's, sir, if you would...
No, I'm gonna do what I'm doing, and you're gonna be quiet.
Excuse me.
Mr. Cohen, you've never even won a real election. You're not gonna appoint anybody. You're gonna do what I'm telling you to do.
Tony, please cut his mic. Sir, wait. Excuse me.
You're for me.
I do. However, I want you to address the council as a body.
We're gonna make a motion to execute that temporary appointment right now, because this is a democracy. Absolutely, absolutely.
Sir, if you would like to continue your comments, excuse me. Let me finish. If you would like to finish your comments, I would ask you to direct them to the council as a whole and not to specific council members. Thank you. Go ahead.
Here's the situation we're in, all right? We got two appointed city council members on the end. What are they gonna appoint somebody? That's about the furthest thing from a democracy I can imagine. Appointed people, appointing people. That's a joke. Take care of it today, just like Irene said. The further and further you get along in the road, the more and more of those, that big party you had up here with all that money gets involved. You're gonna hand out some plaques for some political donors again, Matthew? Take care of it today. This is a democracy living, and this guy swore to defend the democracy. That's what I swore to do, and that's what I'm doing today, Mahan. You exercise your democracy, and we're gonna have a fucking tea party out here, and the homeless people are gonna be shitting and pissing all over this place.
Next speaker. We have, as a reminder, we have David Hindle, Jose Posados, Roxanne, and Kat Angelou, and those are the last of the cards.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Posados. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to share that I've been a District Three resident since I was three years old. I came as an immigrant from Mexico. I was very active locally, civically, volunteered for a lot of campaigns and candidates, some of who were here at City Hall in the past. But the one thing that I could not do was vote. That's the one thing that I could not do as a permanent resident. So when I finally was able to become a naturalized citizen, I definitely look forward to that opportunity. And ever since then, I've always made it a point to vote in both national elections as well as local elections. One of the things that I do now during the day in my day job is actually encourage people to register to vote. In fact, coincidentally, tomorrow I'll be speaking to new citizens that are gonna be sworn in in the city of Campbell. There's typically four sessions with about 400 people in each session, so over 1,000 new citizens that are gonna be eligible to vote. And I go to that podium, and I encourage them to register, and I tell them that voting is really the most important thing that they have as a new citizen, because it was for me as an immigrant, and it's very important that they participate, that they have their voices heard. So from that standpoint, I'm encouraging the city council to look at it that way and to give our District Three residents and my neighbors the opportunity to vote for the next elected representative for District Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I also received another card for Gina.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Well, today I won't be the most emotional person speaking and addressing you today, but I want to thank the council for this opportunity, and I want to give you credit. You all appointed two people that served admirably, and there's enough tension and diversity among this council that I think that you can do it again. And one of those people was also reaffirmed by the voters. So this district needs representation now, because we also have the supervisor seat empty right now. So there is no representation at all for the heart of the city. This is the most dense downtown district there is. I totally want to endorse the first speaker. I don't know him, but his words were wonderful. You know, this is a district that historically the election gets bought by outside interests. They may own property there. They don't live there. They don't participate in our city. And Omar was the first one that was able to break through that big money interest. So I trust you and your diversity and tension between yourselves. You're a mini-democracy. You did a good job last time. Do it again and save the $3 million. I would ask you to put $2 million into our district and save a million for the rest of the city, but whatever. Just don't waste the money, because we don't have a whole lot of trust in the elections down there, because we see big money pour in and take it time after time after time. So get it, let us have a long time to have somebody else come to our district, introduce themselves, and represent our district. That's my thank you. And I want to close. This is our memorial, Trans Day of Remembrance. We got attacked today at the federal government, and it's been silenced. Liccardo.
Sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor and council member David Hindle. We're here again. Two years ago, we were here on the same thing, but there were 600 people here. For some reason, this is a really hot button for me, so I came today to speak basically on three points. I'd like to start with three numbers. There are a lot of numbers talked about how much an election costs. I believe the number's $2 million. You divide that by 40,000 voters. That's $50 a vote. My vote's worth $50. I wonder how many people in this audience, their vote is not worth $50. As a participant in this very, in this process two years ago, in my view, it was not open and transparent, as per the November 9, 2022 memo, and I believe that many people feel it was exactly the opposite. The shift from 37 to 11 people was done without any clear understanding. Finally, we need a new process. Election changes have increased the time and expense. Our leaders have increased the price of an election to the point where everybody says we can't afford an election. It seems to me that that's exactly opposite. We need to have elections. People need to vote for their elected officials. If you want to appoint somebody on an interim basis, fine, but this is the most fundamental thing, putting somebody in a position where they're then the incumbent and have the power of incumbency. As you all know, you are incumbents, and that power is very strong. 98 out of 100 United States congresspeople get reelected. So I would very much urge you to allow the citizens to vote while you go about fixing the process, and I'm happy to help you with that if you'd like, because I've got some great ideas about how to fix the charter and make this a better process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. And Maria also come on down.
Hi, everybody. Hi. Excuse me. I was doing some other work today and didn't, I'm not presenting myself as I usually like to get dressed when I see y'all, because I do respect you. We have a difficult time. I'm a District Three resident, and I've been a District Three resident for a long time, starting when I was a child over by Sacred Heart. Played soccer over at Gardner Community Center, the first women's soccer team with model cities, probably too long ago for some of you. So District Three is really where I was raised, and now I live with my husband. We are homeowners, and we have seen the city change, and we, like a lot of people, are wondering, is this still a place for us? Kids can't buy a house around here. Jobs are tough. You lose it, and it's like, whoop, real close to the end and changing your life. But with that, I still have confidence. I still have faith. I still have hope, and if we work together, we can absolutely get through this. But we have to be smart in getting through this. We have a budget shortfall. We've elected you, or you've been appointed, but I think everybody here now has been elected, if I'm not maybe one person. But my point being is that I have confidence in you. I do not want to waste money, and I feel that you all can do a process that will represent us. And so I'm counting on you all to do that and go through the process and truly be transparent. Thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name's Maria Borski. I am a resident of D3. Been a resident for something like 12 years now, raising a couple kids here in the city. I understand why people want a special election so much. Like, obviously, we want to get to vote for our representatives. That said, you know, here in D3, we already have been without, like, effectively without a council member for many weeks now. Obviously, we've technically had one, but not actually, right? So personally, I do support an appointment process. You all already did that evaluation of our different options two years ago, right, when there were two vacancies open at the time. I'm not sure that a ton has changed, right, with respect to the balance of what makes sense, right? So for me personally, again, elections are awesome, great part of democracy, and just, we just had one. I know, not for this seat, but like, I'm burnt out on political ads. Like, I'm burnt out on all that. And, understandably, an election takes time to set up and do well. It's well-known that special elections just don't have the same kind of turnout that a more traditionally timed election does. And so it's, you know, not as democratic as a normal election. And again, you've already gone through the evaluation of what are the trade-offs, what makes sense in different scenarios, and you did the appointment process last time. I personally, I'm in support of that, which, again, I understand why other people are in support of the special election. If you do choose that, like, let's have an interim council member so that we've got somebody,
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Kat Worthing, or, excuse me, Kat Angelov, using my married name, representing the San Jose Chamber of Commerce. District Three is the heart of downtown San Jose, which makes it the pulse for the rest of the city. With this in mind, the businesses and residences of District Three deserve thoughtful consideration to fill the vacated council seat and to focus on community engagement. The chamber is respectfully requesting that council move forward with holding a special election. This path forward may cost the city more, but it does offer a fair and democratic process that allows residents to have their voices heard. If a special election is the chosen path by council, the chamber believes a public statement of non-candidacy should be included in the basis for reviewing those interested in the council seat. This would attract individuals that have a genuine commitment to serving District Three. Further, the chamber urges you to wait until January 2025 to make any interim appointments, as this timeline would ensure that there's a robust focus on community engagement and participation in the process. As always, the chamber remains a committed partner in advancing San Jose's success and stands ready to assist throughout this process. Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
All right. Thank you. Coming back to the council, first want to thank all the members of the public who took the time to be here today and share your preference with us. It's really important to hear all of the thoughtful commentary, and I have to say, a lot of really great arguments made by folks from the heart, from your experience and your wisdom, and I appreciate that. I'll make just a couple of high-level comments. I don't think anyone will be surprised by where I stand on this, given the debate we had two years ago, but we'll just quickly reiterate that, and then we'll have a conversation and figure out how we're gonna move forward together. We do have a few council memos. Appreciate my colleagues weighing in. And, look, I think reasonable people can disagree and respectfully disagree, and still, we have to come together, make a decision, move forward for the good of the residents of District Three who deserve representation that they can trust and rely on. To reiterate the arguments I made two years ago when District Eight and Ten opened up, I think that fundamentally, the best way to ensure trust in our institutions and our representative democracy is to give people the ability to run competitive and competitive and open races, give the voters the opportunity to ask the tough questions and vet those candidates, and then ultimately cast ballots and trust in the collective wisdom of the community, understanding that we would have a lot of work to do to ensure that everyone's aware that an election's happening, and that I take seriously Chuck's point about participation rates, though I would still prefer the collective wisdom of 10,000 District Three residents over the collective wisdom of 10 council members. No offense to my colleagues. I'm including myself in that. So I think, you know, I just, I think that there's really no substitute for the kind of vetting that you get in an open and competitive election where people have to go out and knock on those doors, attend all those neighborhood meetings, and subject themselves to the questions and feedback of the residents of the district who really should be choosing who represents them. That being said, I am also sensitive to the point about the duration, because the reality is, the way that we do elections in San Jose, and I think we do this for good reason, I fully support what our charter prescribes and how we elect our representatives, is that it is a lengthy process. We have a filing period. We have a campaign. We have a period of time to vote, then we certify results, then the top two do that all over again. And so that is a two-stage, lengthy process. Again, I think it's, there's no substitute for vetting candidates that way and having that public debate and conversation with all of the residents of the district that is choosing a representative, as opposed to folks who, for the most part, other than myself, are elected to represent other parts of town, as a reminder. But, again, that's a lengthy process. So personally, if we do go that route, I will strongly advocate, and suspect colleagues would agree, that we ought would agree, that we ought to have an interim appointment. And to give credit to Councilmember Cohen here, who flagged this for me the other day, I'll go ahead and just say, I think it would behoove us to have that person, if we do go that route, that interim appointee be selected after the filing deadline for the special election so that we can ideally select someone who will be a neutral caretaker, who's not themselves a candidate for that seat. So I think there is a way to do this that gets representation for District Three early in the new year before the budget process starts. And then run that rigorous competitive process and have that concluded, given the July recess probably in roughly the August timeframe, which I acknowledge takes time. I am frankly less sympathetic to the argument about cost. I don't think you can put a price on the value of our, of trust in our institutions and the way that our representative democracy runs. We do manage a $6 billion a year budget overall. A lot of that's fee-generated, but nonetheless, we have a lot of responsibility and a lot of resources, and the most important thing we can do is ensure trust. I say all of that just to reiterate arguments I made two years ago for a special with a temporary appointment. But again, I'll acknowledge, reasonable people can weigh these variables differently and disagree, and what's important to me is that we have a respectful debate. I think you all modeled that quite well, for the most part, during public comment. And then that we come together and commit to the decision, and we all move forward together and move our city forward because this has been a very unexpected and painful chapter in San Jose history, particularly for the residents of District Three, who I know are the folks we're all focused on because they, the 100,000 people who live in District Three have been through a lot over the last five or so weeks. And we need to move forward and support them with a very clear process and all row in the same direction as the city. Okay, I think I have, I have said my piece and then some. I think pretty much everybody in this council wants to weigh in. I look forward to everyone else's reflections and suggestions as we move toward a process. And I'm going to start by turning to Councilmember Davis.
Got to have the grizzled old council member go first, right? So, thank you, Mayor, for your comments. I, I will say, I advocated for appointments last time, and I do have a concern about the budget this time. But I'm trying to weigh that with the need for, frankly, for, for D3 to have a do-over. And so I, I want to ask a little bit about the budget. So the estimate from our city clerk's memo is $2 to $3.3 million. And I know our budget director's not here, so I'm going to go to our city manager, former budget director. Where is this money likely to come from?
What we would do is, and thanks for the question, what we would do is, we would look among our general fund departments and try to reallocate savings, or if there was happened to be any new revenues that would come by the mid-year budget review, we would make that budget adjustment as part of that process in February. If we weren't able to, I'm sure we'd be able to find some savings among the departments, but to the extent that we were short on that, we would go to our Budget Stabilization Reserve, which has been put in place, it's sitting at $61 million, for unexpected unforeseen expenditures and/or if we had an unforeseen revenue shortfall in any given year. So that's what, it's a backstop for that. It's a one-time revenue reserve situation that we have there, and that would be appropriate to use, if needed, as a last resort for a one-time expenditure, what this election would cost and be.
Okay, thank you. So we do have budget stabilization that would be able to help us. Of course, that means it's not available in the future if we have other
That's correct.
...budget shortfalls, which we do anticipate for the, for the upcoming year.
I expect this to be a challenging budget year coming up. I think we're going to be tight on our fund balance. So, and, you know, obviously, these are trade-off policy questions for you all to wrestle with, but we would, again, try to, first, before we hit into that reserve, try to find some vacancy savings, which we're actually at a lower vacancy rate than we've ever been, or any other non-personal equipment savings first, and then go to our Budget Stabilization Reserve as a last resort. But to the extent that we ever wanted to use that as some bridge funding to resolve any ongoing issues to buy time, it would be diminished by the amount that we needed to use it by.
Okay. I, I am, I'm heartened that our budget stabilization is as large as it is. I didn't know it was, was that large, and so I'm, that's heartening. I also know that the, the 2026 special events are likely to be mostly in D3. And hopefully, people will, not just D3 people, but everyone who comes to San Jose will spend liberally and will get more sales tax dollars than we're anticipating for the next fiscal year.
Councilmember, can I just add one piece of context? Because I know that sounds like a large reserve, but it actually is not. For a city our size, we have a council goal to get to 10% reserves. We're probably in the, last I looked, in the 7-plus percent range. We're short of our 10% goal between that and our contingency reserve and another reserve. So we're not actually at the reserve level we'd like to as a city. So I just want to make sure the context there.
I understand, but it's enough to cover, at least, given our last forecast, it's enough to cover next year's deficit.
I don't, I don't, I can't say that yet because we're
Given our last forecast.
Given the last forecast, yes. But I would never recommend to use that
Of course.
Just because it's a one-time versus an ongoing problem. But yes, you're correct.
Which is why we have such good finances. Our, our staff has done very well with the budget in helping us be very conservative spenders, so thank you for that. I, I am heartened, though, that you're confident that we can, we can find that money without too much impact to the city. And to our city clerk, would the, these costs include mail-in ballots for all the registered voters in D3, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be the standard type of election, so there would have to be vote centers because of the size of our city. We can't do all mail, but it would also include the, the mail ballots to everyone.
And do the vote centers, would they just be in D3?
Yes.
Okay. And Tony, you and I talked about the possible schedule. I know you, you presented a schedule in, in the, in the memo, but you and I talked about a schedule earlier. Would you mind putting that up?
Yeah, I don't mind. So the, the schedule that I, I put in the memo was to keep the nomination period outside of the holiday season, but we could, so in the memo, you'll see an April 29th Election Day. If we backed that up to April 8th, the filing period would open on December 16th and end on January 10th. We would have, I confirmed that the ROV does have staff working during that timeframe. So we would, City Hall is closed, but we could make, have the candidates just call and make an appointment, come in, we could go downstairs, meet them, let them in the building, take them up to our, you know, we could escort them in and out if we need to be open during furlough. So this April 8th would be the earliest. The deadlines are based on Election Day minus, and this would be really tight. I don't think, I don't think I could go earlier than that, just to be able to prepare all the paperwork that's necessary.
But it is, so it is possible, I just want to be clear with my colleagues, that it is possible to have the results certified during the July break, the final results, assuming this goes into a runoff, which I think we're all sort of assuming that. So that the, the certification of election results could be at the first city council meeting in August, so the last half of the year would be filled by an elected position. So I just want to be clear about that. Of course, we don't know what the turnout is likely to be, but I will say, judging by the number of cameras here and the number of articles that have been in the paper about the D3 seat, I think that people in District Three are going to be much more aware that their seat is open and why it is open, and probably likely to want to take the chance to, again, get their mulligan. I'm, I'm advocating for an election with an interim appointment. I think it's important to have a representative for the budget process and other critical items that will come in the first half of D, of 2025. And I do like the idea of either a public statement of non-candidacy or doing the, doing the appointment applications to be after the, the filing deadline. And one of the advantages of the timeline that Tony and I, Tony just put up, was that it does have that, that filing deadline is early in January, and so you could have the filing deadline, you could have both applications out at the same time and have the filing deadline slightly later on, on this special, on the appointments. And then you could decide not to choose someone who filed for both, if you, if you wanted to do that. I'm not going to be here, so I'm just throwing that out there. I do also want to talk about the fact that we, we have to go through this multiple primary and, and general election and, and ask Nora, is there any way to do, or would it require a charter change to do a plurality for special elections or to do an instant runoff, something where, where you could only do it once?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Unfortunately, the charter has a very clear limitation on how elections can be done in San Jose. And you, if, if there isn't a winner by 50% plus one at the primary level, you have to go to a runoff election. It might be something that the council wants us to look at, and, and perhaps a charter change in, in the next couple of years, but it is fairly well prescribed.
Thank you. I, I do think for, for now, this being the third time that there's been an open seat, just in, in two years, that it's probably worth it for the council, and I'm going to say, the council next year, to, to have a real big, a true discussion on, on that point and how vacancies that now have seemed to come up more commonly, how vacancies should be attended to, and consider a charter change to, just specifically for special elections. And I see my time is up, so I'm just going to say, I will, I will listen to everyone else and not make a motion, being that I'm the first speaker, but I do think that a special election with the timeline that Tony put up and an interim appointment after, made, made after the filing deadline closes is the way to go. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Let's go to Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, and I, I really appreciate the input of people in the district. These are, this is not a place that we want to be. None of us enjoy having to figure out how to fill vacancies when they arrive on the council. Obviously, sometimes they arrive for happy reasons and sometimes for more difficult reasons, but, you know, it's a difficult position for a sitting council to, to find ourselves. Obviously, we had a little conversation from, from, from Councilmember Davis about the cost and the budget issues. I, you know, if it were just a cost question, I could see past that. I'm, I'm going to come, talk about a couple of other things that I think are more important than the cost question. And the concerns for me are the timeline and the quality of outcome. So I'll, I'll address those. We can squeeze 15 days out of that schedule that we talked about before. The original schedule posted had us certifying somebody in mid-August. This gets us to the end of July, so we're 30, 15 days earlier. But no matter the process, we won't have an elected council member in District Three until August. That's getting us through this entire rest, first half of the year, the one entire budget cycle, without an elected council member in District Three. As we get towards August, we're heading into the cycle for the, for the regularly scheduled election, which is happening in 2026. And whoever is running in that election would have to file for election late in 2025, begin campaigning, and go through a cycle all over again to raise money. In theory, somebody who's elected to this seat this year would have to go through four election cycles in 18 months, where they'd be raising money, campaigning, and the voters would be, you know, listening to that campaign. That, that does not lend itself to the best outcome, I will just suggest. My district is the one that has had the two most recent special elections due to vacancies. And I'm just going to make sure people reflect on the outcomes in those two cases to understand why I'm concerned. In 2006, Mayor Chuck Reed, who was the council member in District Four, was elected to become mayor, leaving a vacancy in District Four. The council left the seat vacant for half a year while a special election was held. The special election drew, I think, seven or eight candidates in the primary, went to a runoff, and in the runoff, Kanson Chu was elected to the city council. The filing period began two months later to be for the following year's election, and because everyone was burned out from running against him, nobody ran. And he was unopposed the following year in the regular election cycle, which I did not find healthy for the district, given that the turnout in the primary election is half of what it is in a special election. And we have the table in the clerk's memo of what the turnouts were in District Four. The turnout is somewhat, about half of what it would be in a, in a regular cycle. So that was the first of those two. Eight years later, Kanson Chu was elected to the State Assembly, leaving another vacancy. In that time, the council settled on a, an interim placeholder, a former council member who held the seat for eight months during the, during the process. Nine candidates filed to run in that special election. Two of them made the runoff, and Man Nguyen was elected to city council in District Four. Following year, of those eight candidates who did not win, make it to the runoff, one of them elected to run in a head-to-head race against the person who was elected in the special election. In that election, Man Nguyen was then beaten by 13 votes by Councilmember Luon Diap, who became council member for four years. Over the two-year cycle, District Four had four council members as a result of doing a special election. My concern is, given the amount of money we're going to spend on this, which, you know, if it were, you know, a vacuum in terms of whether it's an election or not, may not be too much, that that outcome is not necessarily better serving the residents of District Three. And so I'm still, even though I, you know, my instinct is, this case is very difficult for District Three, elections are, you know, typically a better process, I have not been able to convince myself that we would end up with a better outcome for the residents of District Three by holding a special election. In the meantime, if we were to do a special election, we would still be faced with the process of doing an interim appointment. Certainly, I appreciate that the mayor took my suggestion. We wait to make sure we don't appoint somebody who would be running, which helps, but it's still a political process. We'd still be appointing the person who would be voting on behalf of District Three in the budget cycle. And no matter what we think about finding a unifying choice, I think we all know the reality of what will happen in a case where there are multiple people trying to be appointed to that seat. It will still be a difficult decision for this council. And, and, and just, we'll dispel with the idea that we will do it before the end of this year. It will be the new council that will be making that appointment, I believe, if we do it. But having said that, I'm not convinced that we, it makes our jobs any easier and it necessarily makes the, the process turnout better. And I will, I'll just say one other thing about doing this quickly. I mean, we, look, the timeline is squeezed as much as possible. I don't think we can do it any faster. But a shorter-term cycle, which is, this really is, I mean, somebody would be declaring to run in December, an election in front of voters in April. I don't know how much time people have or how many, or how much stamina people have, but it's, it's probably impossible to knock on every voter's door in a three-month election window, especially during the winter rainy season, all the things that they'll be faced with. It really is name, ID, and money that will win a short-cycle election. Again, not necessarily the outcome that would be best for the residents of District Three. So while I, I'm, I've been torn on this, and, and, you know, I know that there's a lot of, we went through this before, so I know the kinds of feelings people have, backroom dealing, I hear those terms all the time, you know, that somehow this is, you know, a political decision. I would like to hope that people understand that, for me, this is a principled decision, that I, a principled feeling that I have, that I have thought thoroughly about over multiple years because we've been, this is the second time now we're facing this. So I'm just, I'm just want to throw all that out there so people understand the context in which we're making this decision. I understand that, you know, the majority of the council may choose an election, that the majority of the council may choose an appointment, but I, I just wanted to make my discomfort with the election clear and explain why. I'll just add one other thing, then more about process. First of all, I submitted a memo. My memo basically just says, whatever we decide today about how to do it, we should wait two weeks on the details of the process and timeline and, and what the next steps are, because I don't know that we can throw that together here on the dais and come up with a good example. So my memo just says, let's spend the next two weeks, then bring back a suggestion for process and vote on that in two weeks. That still would give us the opportunity to get the timeline that's up on the screen done, I believe. Is that true? up on the screen done, I believe. Is that true? Tony?
We need, if you don't make a decision today, we, and you make a decision in two weeks, then you have to bring back a resolution to call for the election. So that puts you out another week, so I'm not sure.
If we make a decision today to hold the election, but we don't necessarily vote on the process and timeline, we could do those two things simultaneously on December 3, right?
Yeah, we just, the resolution to call the election needs to be done on December 5th for the tighter timeline.
Okay, so, so we could still get it done if we don't decide on the full timeline today. Okay, I appreciate that. And then the last thing I'll just say is, I know I learned a lot from going through this before with the two members that we appointed in the last cycle. It, it is clear from that process and how we did it that more community engagement is, would be required. So regard, so if we do move down the path of a, of a, an appointment, I would suggest that we put in place, in addition to the process that we might have done before, the opportunity for some public forums, for some events where people can, whoever is appointing can appear before the voters, that we get feedback from residents of the district as we're making the decision, so that it does, it does become a more transparent process with input from the residents of the district. So that would be my suggestion if we move forward with an appointment. Thank you for, you know, listening to my views on it, and I'm interested in hearing what others have to say about it.
Thanks, Councilmember Cohen. Okay, let's go to Councilwoman Candelas next.
Thank you, Mayor. Professor Cohen, thank you for that history lesson. No, I, I, no, I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Cohen. It's, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good perspective as we have this conversation on what's, what's, what's happened, specifically in our city. And, you know, in recent weeks, our city's been rocked by, you know, the events leading to this conversation. And, you know, we've heard from business leaders, neighborhood leaders, residents who have an expectation of, of a fair process and an opportunity to have their voices heard. And, and, you know, given the extraordinary circumstances that put us here, I think it's, it's impact on the trust of our residents and city government to, to your point, Mayor. Despite the costs and trade-offs they will ultimately require, I think it is essential for, for this council to give District 3 residents a, a voice in selecting their next leader. A special election, I think, brings fairness. And, in, in selecting somebody who voters get to decide and has a fresh start and a mandate to serve this city and its diverse interests, workers and, and businesses who, who call District 3 home. I, look, I, I completely understand the merits of an appointment, more than most, actually. And, you know, two years ago, while I didn't have the opportunity to weigh on that, weigh in on that decision, I did just go door-to-door in an election. I did talk to thousands of people where I got to understand the issues. And so, you know, I, I don't want to discount the, the merits of, of a special election, but I think, or of an appointment, but I think it's, it's, it's important and imperative for our community to have a voice through an appoint, through a special election. And, and this special election, most importantly, is going to help rebuild that trust in our city. And we have to do it quickly and efficiently. And, you know, even a short-term appointment, if I'm being honest, you know, that's going to raise questions about fairness and transparency. And so, you know, I, I want to also commend city council staff, District 3 staff who's in here. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up. Mayor, I know you have your staff leading up and, and doing constituent casework, helping residents navigate bureaucracy of the cities, and, and it's tough. So while we do that, I think, you know, you deserve thanks. And, you know, ultimately, to have someone appointed, even in the, in the short term, I think ultimately defeats the purpose of a special election completely. You know, I, I think that District 3 residents deserve, deserve better. And, and ultimately, I, you know, I'm curious to hear from more of my colleagues, but, but definitely want to lean in on a quick, and hopefully we can narrow down a timeline in the coming weeks on what a special election looks like, so residents have clarity and ultimately we can help spread the word on, on how we can get voter participation and make sure that everybody has an opportunity, whether they cast their ballot or not, but everybody has an opportunity to weigh in. And that's, that's critically important. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Candelas. Let's go to Vice Mayor Kamau.
Thank you. You know, many times, as an elected official, we have to weigh many of the trade-offs before us and certainly understand, you know, whether it's a, an issue of a cost of an election or whether there are outcomes in a special election that you don't necessarily, you know, that's hard to predict. I personally was in a special election way, way, way back in 1996, when my conda went from the board of supervisors to the assembly, and the board of supervisors decided to have a special election that started in February and a general in March. 11% voter turnout. So I definitely know, you know, in terms of some of the trade-offs that can happen there in terms of what the outcomes may or may not be. District 3 really has undergone a lot of challenges, and I agree with the mayor that, you know, it's been unexpected and very painful for many. And I believe that D3 really deserves representation. I too want to thank the staff of the D3, as well as the mayor's staff, who has been filling in the gaps, because the people really deserve to be represented, and they've done a really good job. I, you know, what, I have been trying to weigh, you know, sort of the benefits of, of each of the decisions. I will say that I, I do like the filling of the vacancy by an election and as soon as possible, using the earlier timeframe, but waiting till after the close of the filing period to do the, the interim. I think that's, that, that's a good idea, so that you have a, a placeholder kind of in the interim, because I think that the district needs that representation and they need someone to be there for them. So I'm hoping that, that is something that my colleagues think is a good idea and would certainly support in terms of, of having the special election as soon as possible, given the timeline that the clerk has put on the screen. It's a little bit different than some of the information that we had previously, but it is sooner. And choosing the interim appointment after the close of the filing period.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Batra?
I think we heard from many people who showed up here, they want to have a representation, and they want to be able to vote, they want to be able to select their own person. The concern which I have is that it's August 25th is potentially the date we may end up with, or give or take a few days. During that time, you have an interim person. Question I have is, do we have to have an interim person, or can that be a assigned rotation to the other council members? They don't have much to do, so, you know, that was sarcastic comment, so, in case anybody didn't get that, okay? All right. So I just want to ask that, is that a possibility, Mayor, that the rotation, rather than an interim assignment?
Are you saying for providing the functions of the office or for a vote on the dais here?
No, 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 for, for being able to carry by rotation the duties while the special elections and things are being held.
My understanding is, as long as the seat is vacant, we have the discretion, technically the District 3 staff is reporting to me now and, and working very closely. Chief of Staff, Kiara, is still running the office and working closely with my team, and we're continuing to provide constituent services through the District 3 office. So that, there's that, but I, obviously, as, as I think residents of the district would, would note, and I think has been referenced, during the budget process, for example, you know, I think people are going to want to have a vote on this body, on behalf, on important decisions of, of budget and policy, but the office functions are actually continuing, as has been pointed out, the District 3 staff is doing a great job of showing up every day and continuing to serve the, the residents of the district. So I think you just have to be maybe more precise about which functions you're describing.
Yeah, the council member getting assigned that, so let's see, District 8 council member is the council member for District 3 performing the duties for next month. A month later, could be the District 7, could be District 6.
I, I guess what I would suggest is, all of, essentially, the, the vast majority of the functions of the council office are currently intact and, and theoretically could be, all the way to August, when someone is seated. In, in the scenario in which we did a special election, and then someone was elected and seated in August, all of the, the core functions of taking calls and emails, going to neighborhood meetings, recording people's feedback, all of that, you know, sharing updates from City Hall with the community, a newsletter, all those sorts of things are currently happening, thanks to the existing D3 staff working closely with staff in my office. We're, we're supporting them. That could continue. I, I think what's missing is a vote, and I, I don't think, I don't know, I don't even think you're suggesting this, but I, I don't think there's going to be an appetite on the council to rotate everybody having a second vote. So I, I don't see that happening. So it's, it's really, it's really, actually, it sounds like Councilwoman Foley would like a second vote, but I don't see that happening. That's kind of the core thing that's missing, is that formal vote on very important, on the policy and budget decisions we make here on the council and in our, in our committee meetings. But otherwise, all the constituent services could be maintained, though I think there would be an argument for still wanting to have an interim appointment for other, for other, for the, the point of having a voting representative.
So, having that history lesson from the professor who is right now not there, okay, the concern for the time, I'm not concerned about the budget issues, that I've seen some amount of even previous appointment, I've seen many people, they never got over that, in our district, that they were not able to vote the last time for the appointment versus the election. So based on that one, I would be inclined towards going, having a special election. But, you know, the other considerations which have been brought up in terms of the time it's going to take, the cost it's going to take, I agree with those. And the professor's comment about going through multiple changes and not having that within a short time, I think are serious concerns. But I will be inclined towards going the special election, even though I'm not making a motion to do that.
Okay, good to have your, your views on it. Thank you for that, Councilwoman Batra. Let's go to Councilwoman Duong.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's establishing a, a clear, consistent procedure for filling a vacant council seat is crucial for enhancing the, the accountability, the trust, the confidence from our residents out there. San Jose recently have, have lost that confidence, I, I believe, and that trust from our constituent, especially in D3. And I think it's important that we think about our constituent who went out there and, and made a recall. They want to be heard. And I think that having that special election would allow them to, to choose, to make the decision for whom they think best. And we all know, within the last six weeks, it's been very difficult for all of us, but by having staff developing a procedure for the future vacancy, that emergency situation such as this one, we aim to eliminate the ambiguity and ensure more transparency and consistent process for filling a vacancy. And it would further remove any potential for political influence or delay in filling the vacancy. This would help us to regain and fostering the public trust and integrity in the entire council body. Upon the, the occurrence of vacancy in the council seat in District 3, I think the city must hold a special election within a realistic timeframe to ensure the best of our capacity that the people, not the council, select their representative. Even though the special election will incur cost, but what is the, the cost of democracy? What is the cost of freedom of choice? And I'll tell you this, as an immigrant slash refugee, came from a country that my parents, my grandparents, and my voice was being oppressed, didn't have the freedom to, to vote. What we're, if we don't have that special election, technically, we fall in the same process, that we don't listen to our constituent. If we doing that, we shouldn't be up here. We should always value that freedom loud and clear, because we are not only lead right here in the city of San Jose, but in the world, as a nation that give you an opportunity to voice yourself. And coming from a country, again, that was being oppressed. The choice was taken away from you. I came here and I value the fact that I can vote. I value the fact that I can be whoever I want to be in this great country. So I believe in the election, it's a must. And I, in the meantime, we can always have interim, but interim should not have the opportunity to, to run, because what it does is give it an unfair advantage to other people. And I hope that our council and, and our mayor, and even our citizen out there, based on the democracy, based on the right of human rights, and based on the right from the, the slavery, the men and the women that have fought hard to have a right to vote, we should never suppress that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let's go to, thank you. Let's go to Councilwoman Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think everyone has a sense as to where I stand on this, but let me just first say that I too believe that voting's important. Became a citizen in 2008, so it's been about 16 years whereby I voluntarily raised my hand and said, I want to be a part of this country, I want to be a citizen, and I want to vote. And certainly, I don't think going through an appointment process is circumventing the democratic process, or voting process, is circumventing the democratic process. I think part of the democratic process, certainly voting is included in that, but it's also the democratic institutions, the elected body, the charter, the constitution of the city that allows us to make these decisions, I think is consistent with the democratic sort of idea of this country, and, and it's within the purview of this council to make those decisions. I also want to say that I appreciate, I know people were calling you Professor, Councilmember Cohen, but I'll, I'll call him Dr. Cohen, so I think it's more appropriate. Appreciate all the comments he made. One of the things I wanted to lift up as it relates to his comments is simply that I too believe, and these aren't his words exactly, but I do believe that special elections only bring out a certain percentage of folks, and I think that there's some, it, it's not necessarily democratic in my eyes, that only a very specific segment of the community, of society of District 3, they're going to be making these decisions. That's why I think an appointment is the best way to move forward. If you, you know, two years down the line, or even before then, you're going to start seeing some of the candidates emerge, they can run a full-fledged campaign, election, and you elect someone. So for me, it's not a matter of if you get to vote, it's just when you get to vote. You are going to have your say. And so that's why I think that is the best approach. If you think about the timeline, I think Councilmember Cohen laid this out, but if we were to go through special election, the folks that would go through that election would be perpetually running for office. And I'll let you in on a little bit of a secret here, if we're all honest with ourselves up here, is that when we're running for reelection, we're not always present, both mentally and physically. We're knocking on doors, we're calling vote, folks to give us money. That's the way We're knocking on doors, we're calling folks to give us money, that's the way it sort of shakes out, and so I think we have to be careful, and district three residents have to be careful what they ask for. If we go down the road of a special election, you're going to have someone, a group of people perpetually running for office all the way till November 26, '25. November, I think it's November 26th of 2025. So I don't think that's healthy, I don't think it's good. I've run for office twice, and I can tell you that there is a part of you that is very much focused on the campaign, the politics. And so I think appointing someone, having someone there, being front and center, paying attention to the issues, taking the crucial votes that give your district the proper representation, I think is the best approach. The other thing that I would say is, I don't, you know, I don't think it's trivial to say that it costs $2 to $3 million to have this election. I wanted to read off to you, and us up here know that time and again during the budget cycles, we often get told there's no money. We don't have money to do things. We get shot down time and again by every mayor, not just, not just Mayor Mayhem, because we have to make sure that we use our resources wisely. So I wanted to give you an example of some of the things that can be purchased or bought, created, built, using this money. With these funds, we could hire 17 additional police officers. With these funds, sideshow deterrence, by the way, is a common budget request. DOT estimates a cost of $40,000 to implement deterrence on major intersections. With this money, you could deter sideshows on about 75 major intersections in San Jose. Speed bumps, everyone's fan of speed bumps. Every year, we tell residents, there's no traffic safety because of cost, we can't afford it, gets expensive. Well, speed bumps cost approximately $12,500, we could fund 256 speed bumps across the city. Park activations, this money could give us exactly 492 movie nights, Viva Park events, emergency interim housing at Cherry, I'm sure we can plug some holes there. Capital improvements at a park that I represent, Palmea Park in South San Jose, 2.5 million to renovate that park that the residents have been asking me about for years and years and years. Even Lake Cunningham Park. Councilmember Candelas, the lake's revitalization is estimated to cost between $3 and $20 million, according to studies. So the money could go there. The Gardner Community Center, one year of activation, I think I've seen numbers of about $500,000. And even Councilmember Kamay, I would say, I know there was a house recently that I think we're still trying to raise money for to move from district four to another part of the city, we could potentially use the money for things like that. And so I don't think the amount of money spent is trivial. I think, given the Trump administration and the potential lack of cooperation at the federal government and getting money to flow down to the states, especially California, especially the city of San Jose, budget deficits at the state level, and obviously the budget forecast here in the city, I think require us to certainly think about district three residents, but also use a broader sort of analysis as to whether this is the best approach for the city. Because I don't have the luxury of making decisions specifically for district three, we need to think about the whole city, the impacts it's going to have on many of the things we can do. And so that's why I continue to think, although I suspect the votes aren't there, that an appointment is the best process forward. You know, the folks up here that are here because of an appointment, I can tell you, we don't agree on everything. These weren't like, oh, we're going to put this person in, they're going to agree on everything. Councilmember Batra and I don't agree on everything. But I think that's healthy. I think that's, it's an example of what we can get, the quality type of individuals that we can get via an appointment. And so I think it checks all the boxes monetarily, I think the legitimacy is within our authority to appoint, and so I just think it's the right thing to do. I do have a question. Assuming we go down the road, and so to the extent possible, there's a motion that moves us forward any particular way, I was hoping that the city manager's office, or maybe the city attorney's office, can touch on the possibility of moving the administration of the district three office into the office of the city manager, rather than it being within the office of the mayor, because as we know, one of the contenders for the potential seat is a mayor staffer, and so I think it's, it behooves us to be very thoughtful and objective as to how we move forward with that, the administration of that office. And so I'm curious if there's, if there's any thoughts, or if we have that ability to do that.
I would defer to Nora to make sure, I don't know what the charter says about that, but if, if the council desires to have the city manager's office, I have no problem with that, we can certainly handle that. We're good at administration, and it would be, you know, basically, the constituent services
Correct.
Going forward for a temporary period of time, so we can certainly be glad to take that additional responsibility on, but I do need to defer to Nora on the, what the charter says about that.
All right, well, sorry. Let's let, let's let our city attorney chime in.
Thank you. The, the staff is continuing to provide constituent services. Traditionally, the mayor's office has helped with oversight if there has been a vacancy, a council vacancy. The charter does, and that's as the political leader of the city, the charter does have a section that the city manager can be directed by council to handle other, all other duties as assigned, so it's, it's a broad power. The only caution that I would make with that is to make sure that the city manager's office is not entering into the arena of politics, just like when the council is not to step into the administration of the city. So that, that would be the only thing, I think guardrails could be put up in terms of what that might look like, but it is a possibility.
Nora, is that something, is that something you could do further analysis on and bring back with, I mean, seeing how the motion goes, bring back the consideration as we lock in a process at a subsequent meeting?
Sure. And, and I've had at least one discussion with the city manager's office, and I think there's a way to indicate what they would be handling and, and what the district staff would handle, and, and those other political issues will, unless there's an appointment, will remain unaddressed.
Yeah, I mean, I will, I will note, we, we have staff who choose to run, I mean, you had staff this year choose to run for your seat, so we do, we do, at time to time, have staff go run. I don't know why that would influence how the district three staff is continuing to do their job, but I think it's worth understanding our legal options and coming back when we have more information to decide if we want to change how we're, how we're handling the oversight of the staff on the 18th floor.
Yeah.
I do have a little bit of a concern with a, with the city manager's office overseeing 18th floor staff, just given the structure of our, of our government here, but I think it's worth understanding the legal, the legal considerations and discussing and debating it when we lock in a process at a subsequent meeting.
Sure. I'm up to, you know, getting some information back to us at some, some point, not too distant future. I think you are correct, and obviously, there's staff that we have that have, my, one of my, my chief of staff ran for office recently, but I also wasn't overseeing and managing a different office, and so we're, you know, and the office in which he was running for. And so I think it's uniquely different, and I think if we want to be above the fray and above politics, I think it's very important to have a very clear line of, of reporting, and that's why I think the city manager's office sort of presents that best opportunity. And so I think, my hope is, the more, the more we can get politics out of these decisions, the better, but I realize it permeates everything that we seemingly do, and so that's why I think having clarity in that space is supremely important, and I'd like to think that, I think that's what I just stated, and the clarity there is evident, self-evident to the council members, and so I hope that when this comes back for a discussion, that we voluntarily sort of adopt something that creates a cleaner line of reporting. Thank you.
Okay. It's only worth further, further discussion. Okay, let me go to Councilor Foley.
Great, thank you. Wow, I've heard a lot of really good comments from the members of the public, thank you for being here and sharing your thoughts. I've been to a lot of commission meetings where I serve as liaison, and I always ask the D three residents how they feel, and they're very consistent in saying they want special elections. I appreciate the passion of Councilmember Jimenez and everyone else on this dais, over this issue. I was one of the few who were here at that time when we voted originally to have a special election, or appointment versus special election. I actually am consistent and supported a special election then, and failed in our vote, we were not successful, but I will support that today. I think it's very important that we have a special election, but I also, and allow the residents of D three to select their successor, the successor council member. You know, district three has been through a lot, as frankly, every council member sitting on the dais has been through a lot with the horrible situation of the current council member. We all feel it emotionally, we all feel it, it's very difficult and painful for every one of us, it's truly, frankly, horrific. But we need to give district three their representation, and we need to allow district three to heal and select the person who will represent them. So I've, I've listened to all of the discussions and made some, some notes, and so I'm going to make a motion. And my motion is that we seek to hold special elections as soon as possible, that we appoint an interim to fill the current vacancy, only accepting, appoint, making that appointment after the filing period expires on the special election appointment. That I include the Cohen memo, that we finalize details for this at our next council meeting. And I'd like to add that we bring back an analysis by legal counsel on the issues raised by Councilmember Jimenez, so we can understand those a little better. And with, with that, I move.
Okay. I heard, I think it was Councilwoman Davis. And then Councilwoman Foley, just to clarify something that, that all makes sense to me, I took notes on, I'm sure Tony did as well. Councilwoman Davis made the good point that we can accept applications for an interim appointment concurrently, so that as soon as we have hit the filing deadline, we can immediately thereafter actually have an interview process and select an interim.
Right.
And I assume that your motion is, is assuming that we're doing that?
So you're saying, you're suggesting that we, that we see the applications?
No, just that we're collecting applications concurrently to save time, but to your point, I mean, your motion, I think, was clear, we're not selecting the person until after the filing deadline is over, but we're not waiting to begin collecting.
That's fine. Yeah, I would agree with that.
Those run concurrently, but we select after the filing deadline closes.
Yes. If you need to add that concurrently, then I'll include that.
I think it's just a process point, I just didn't want it to be a question that came up later.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. That does speed it up about a week or so, I think.
Yeah. Okay. Tony, do you need any other clarification at this point?
No, it's pretty clear, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. So we have a motion and a second. I'm inclined to vote, but I still see a couple of hands up, so we'll see if we can get through this. Councilor Duane?
Just real quick, I, I will be supporting an election and, and your proposed, so Councilmember Foley, but I also want to make a friendly amendment to direct staff to research option for us to consider for future changes to the city charger, I mean, to the city charter, which set a clear and non-debatable path for filing a vacant, fulfilling a vacant seat.
Councilmember Duane, I really appreciate that, and I absolutely think that that's something that the council should look at, but not in the conjunction with this. I think that's something that the new council in 2025 should go through the rules process and go through the full process of analysis. I absolutely think it's important that we do that, just not in conjunction with this.
Thank you, we'll look forward to bring it to rules.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilor, Councilman Cohen?
I'll be very quick. First, I'm going to just say that, you know, I, I know where this is going, and I'm okay with it, this is the process, and it's, and it's been a great conversation. Just want to make sure people understand that this idea that, of appointing is, happens everywhere. Alameda County just recalled their district attorney, and the point, the, the actual replacement will be filled by the five-member board of supervisors appointing someone through 2026. That's exactly what's going to happen there, this happens all the time, I just want to make sure that, you know, this is not some subversion that's being suggested. I also want to just point out that this is where, you know, a conversation as we move forward, if we're going to have a conversation about process, that's where we should be having a conversation about instant runoff voting and the ability to do an election in, in one step, which saves half the money of a cost of an election. And unfortunately, we didn't have that available to us to do during this vacancy filling, because we could have had an election in April, using instant runoff voting, gotten to 50% plus one, and been done with a, with a council member seated by May, so we ought to consider that as we move forward in thinking about charter amendments. And then I have a question about the motion. The motion talks about coming back in December 3rd with process, I want to make sure that that process is not just about the timeline of the election, but a full thought about how the appointment process for the, for the interim will occur.
Oh, yes, it should absolutely include how we're going to appoint the interim.
Yeah, thank you.
And what we'll be looking for in the interim, and what we expect the interim to be doing. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Councilor Batra?
Yeah, I, I want to make two comments, one, which council member clarified that the appointment is not, this is not the only place where the appointment has ever happened or happens. I want to point out that the, whenever our senator, if there's a need, because if a senator leaves the position for whatever reason, the senator gets appointed, not by any public comments, that's get appointed by the governor, and it's a one person, there's no voting done of any kind. So it's the one person who chooses, and that's it. So the appointment is not as undemocratic as it may sound here, okay? The second portion I was going to comment on is the, which it just got clarified, that when we come back for the process, the process should include the appointment, interim appointment, and it should keep in mind the comment which was made earlier, that if we were going to go the appointment process for the entire thing, there should be more opportunity for the community to get involved with it, and whether that would be appropriate in terms of holding some kind of forum, rather than just a one-on-one interview and forum, and community has some way of being able to give even input on getting the interim person coming in. So that kind of a process should be explained in there, if there would be opportunity or would not be opportunity, so whatever the case might be, so that would be helpful in there, okay? So I just wanted to add those.
Thank you for those comments. Looks like we've exhausted everyone's comments and questions. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes eight to two, with Jimenez and Cohen voting against.
Okay. Great. Thank you all very much.
Did you get the names?
Thanks again to all the D three residents who came out this evening, have a great rest of your night. Let's go on to item 5.1. This is amendments to City Council Policy 6-4, an authorization to proceed with request for proposal for large format signage/bilboards at San Jose Monet International Airport. And I will turn to city staff for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Burton, Director of Planning, Building Code Enforcement, joined today for this combination item with my colleague Mookie Patel, Director of Aviation, and Martina Davis, Division Manager of Citywide Planning. So the item today is, as I mentioned, a combination item. The first part I'll be talking about before handing it over to Mookie, which is amendments to the adopted City Council Policy 6-4, which City Council adopted back in September of 2018. Essentially, what this policy does was confirm the city's continued interest in regulating signs on city-owned land to promote aesthetically pleasing environments. It provided City Council Policy Directive to city staff on electronic billboards, including implementation guidelines for electronic signs and billboards on city-owned land. Those implementation guidelines include minimum limitations on location number, type, size, and height. It established message limitations that the city may impose on these signs. It describes the process for the approval of signs that may be allowed under the policy, as well as identifying 17 designated sites, of which four are on airport property. So back in- So back in February and then again in December of 2022, City Council gave staff direction to amend the policy. Initially, sorry, the amendments included a six-to-one takedown ratio for new digital billboards, so that for every new billboard that is installed, six existing billboards in the city would be required to be taken down. In addition, it included a five-to-one tree replacement ratio, so if trees are being removed due to the implementation and installation of new billboards, that we would replace those at a five-to-one ratio and that those plantings be prioritized in San Jose neighborhoods that lack adequate tree canopies and must be maintained in addition for a further three years. And then lastly, that those signs would use 100% renewable energy from San Jose Clean Energy. So we're bringing forward these amendments, to implementation of these amendments through this action.
So the second part of this presentation, good afternoon, Councilmembers. Mookie Patel, Airport Director. Second part of this presentation is the authority to go out for an RFP, a request for proposal, to issue one RFP for two locations on airport property. The goals of the RFP are to obviously diversify our revenue stream from our traditional revenues and generate some income from billboard advertising. The second point, the airport would maintain approximately 10% of the advertising hours or advertising time to promote specific airport initiatives, new flights, new destinations, and promote the airport. Item three will abide by the revised 6.4 that will remove visual clutter around our city and remove billboards in communities that meet the guidelines. And then again, with 6.4, we will meet the tree canopy, that's in the RFP, is to improve our tree canopy expectations. So real quick, a little bit redundancy there, but there's only two billboards that we're asking for permission to RFP at this time. The other two locations aren't deemed sufficient at this time. They're both along Airport Boulevard facing 101. The lease term is a 10-plus 10. Again, the benefits for the city and the airport is that the structure of the agreement would allow for a minimal annual guarantee payment from the successful awardee along with a percentage of revenue. And then again, setting aside time for us to promote airport items on the billboards is beneficial, especially along 101, where we see leakage to our neighboring airports north of us. The advertising policy will follow and comply with all the city and public agency policies, so we will have strict controls of what is promoted on these digital billboards. And as Chris mentioned, the last bullet point there, renewable energy will be used with San Jose Clean Energy. The five-for-one tree removal for every tree that is removed to put up these billboards will be replacing with five trees in our underserved, under-canopied areas throughout the city. And of course, again, the 6.1 billboard removal. So that's about it. The last slide here is a picture, so just to give you a visual reference of where the two locations are. And we'll take any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Yes, I have four cards. Dr. Paul Linham, Jason Hemp, John Miller, and Les Levitt. Come on down. First person in the microphone, go ahead and speak, and the others can sit in the first row that says reserved.
Hello, Dr. Paul Linham from the University of California Observatory, Lick Observatory on Mount Hamilton. Since September 2018, we've been trying to educate the council about the danger of light pollution, light at night, and particularly the egregious pollution from digital billboards. Certainly, we agree, 6.4 is deficient. It neglects a lot of the recommendations that pro-DART skies advocates have been calling for. 6.4 is incompatible with existing city policies. It's also inconsistent with the general plan. Light pollution has gone too far. We don't talk about mitigation anymore, we talk about reduction. Light pollution is harmful, it produces cancers, it produces, there's links to dementia and links to stroke. You're going to harm the future population of the city by producing hormonal cancers. The time for billboards is, the writing's on the wall. Moves are for state level to eliminate light pollution. There are legislations going through the state right now. So certainly, please do review Policy 6.4, but with a view to reducing light pollution overall. Certainly, do not allow billboards to be illuminated at night. Lick Observatory is now the most light-polluted observatory in the visible light in the world. Lick Observatory, you talked about a budget that you manage of 6 billion. The last time it was estimated, the budget or the capital investment for Lick Observatory is 1.2 billion. So this is the type of effect you're going to have on astronomical endeavors and these foreign trade zone high-tech industries, the people that are going to staff them and service them and come up with these new ideas. You're taking that inspiration away, you're damaging DARTs guys, you're damaging people's health. Thank you very much for your service. It's been a good education today.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Sean.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, all right. Jason Hemp, No Digital Billboards Group. Here we are again. I want to start with asking the question, you've heard the phrase trash begets trash, right? The concept of if there's trash on the ground, someone walks by, they feel no concerns about adding to that pile versus walking by a pristine lawn and they're more hesitant to add something that would deface that. Well, that's how I feel about the billboards along the 101 freeways right now. And if you've gone along the 101 corridor, you've seen proliferation of digital billboards in our neighboring towns, Santa Clara, Milpitas, and as far as the peninsula. And I feel like, I want to ask you, do you want to be a follower or a leader? Like, do you want to just put more billboards along the 101 freeway, or do you want to create like an inspiration for people to be welcomed to San Jose when they drive by 101? And a slide that I have up that we've presented and attached to the agenda under public comment is an alternative consideration. Maybe consider putting an RFP out to ask for a mural or an on-premise sign that you can advertise 100% of the time the airport services and flight paths that are available to people that are passing by, whereas the proposal before you today, in the fine print, at most up to 10% of the time available on the sign is going to be advertising the airport services. So food for thought. And I'd like to close by saying, you wouldn't have to raise any trees if you did an on-premise sign on the existing economy parking lot garage. You still could see it from the freeway.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
I'm John Miller with No Digital Billboards in San Jose. This isn't just about the proposed billboards at the airport. This is about the negation of the ban on new billboards on public property and the coming of all digital billboards currently being proposed. So let's look at the two major arguments that the proponents for billboards make. The first one is revenue. The city's going to make a lot of money from all these billboards that are up and running during Phase One on public property, but for six years, no one seemed to know what the dollar amount was going to be. And it was only recently that OED admitted that we're only talking about $2 million here in terms of the total revenue going to the city from all of these proposed billboards. That's sort of a joke, isn't it? I mean, are we really going to trade off the architectural integrity of San Jose for chump change? Now, let's look at the second major reason proponents make. They're talking about taking down those terrible conventional billboards. Supposed to be six-to-one ratio, but somehow the proposed billboards downtown have been exempted from that requirement. Why is that the case? Instead of approving Policy 6.4, you can ask why the exemption, why the bait and switch. Nobody wants digital billboards in San Jose except the billboard companies. Why are elected and appointed officials intent on forcing residents to become a captive audience for unsolicited commercial messages for which there is no off switch? I suggest, don't approve a new RFP for the airport billboards and don't approve amendments to Policy 6.4. Instead, get the city out of the billboard business. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I am Les Levitt from No Digital Billboards in San Jose. We cannot stress enough the litigation risk here. This slide is from a billboard industry publication explaining how it would be a no-brainer to sue San Jose if the council allows billboards on public property but prohibits them on private property. Don't think of this as a decision about a couple billboards at the airport. Don't think of this as a decision in isolation. A decision here to move forward can rapidly lead back to where we were a few years ago, hundreds of new billboards on private property all over the city. Today, the billboard company is the city's friend. Tomorrow, they may be the adversary in litigation. And who will monitor and negotiate content, especially for constantly changing content? That's another risk we suggest not even, we suggest is not even close to being taken seriously enough. There are a lot of contentious issues in San Jose. This is a consensus issue, opposition to billboards. The answer here is that all the risk and the unintended consequences can be avoided by the city simply not getting into the billboard business. SJC staff should be happy advertising inside airport buildings without jeopardizing the environment of the entire city by insisting on installing giant digitals around the airport. And by the way, if this project moves forward, it's our understanding that the tech museum would be the only science museum in the United States to have a billboard, and that's out of principle. And that would be a giant embarrassment to the city of San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you.
So many of you know that I've had two brain surgeries, and I had them because I have a neurological condition. These billboards will totally exacerbate this neurological condition. It will blind me. It sets off something in the, my neurological pathways, and I am blind and I cannot see. One example is, there's a jewelry shop, I think 24th and Santa Clara, it's near the McDonald's. I'm just pointing at you because you probably know what I'm saying. There's a, there's a digital, there's sort of like a small digital billboard or a bright sign above the jeweler's. When I pass that at night, I can't see anything. And if I drive into a family, meh, because I can't see anything. It will be the same effect with some, a billboard like this. There is a giant billboard along the freeway around here somewhere, and every time I pass that, I can't see anything. I'm just blind. So if I drive into a car, if, you know, if I drive over Bigfoot, if he's running across the freeway that day, you know, I can't see. And it's the same thing for people who have epilepsy. It sets off, it triggers the same thing. There's many, many seniors. We all know that there's the, the tons of seniors that are out there, that it sets off the astigmatism, people who can't see driving at night. So there's a huge issue with these, not only setting off people like me with medical conditions, but people who can't see at night with the brightness blinding them. And I just feel like this is going to cause issues with people who can't see at night or have medical issues like me. And I don't know why you would step into that kind of litigation or causing medical issues, and it just seems like a bad idea. So I would hope that you would vote no on these billboards, because, I don't know, if you blind me and I run over Bigfoot, I'm going to come over and blame you guys.
Back to council.
All right. Thank you to everyone who shared their perspective on this item. Since there was mention of downtown billboards, I do just want to clarify for the public that this item, item 5.1, is specific to an authorization to proceed with an RFP, a request for proposal for the billboards at the San Jose Manette International Airport. So I just want to make sure people are clear on what tonight's vote would pertain to. Let me turn to colleagues for further comment. Sorry, give me one second to pull up my list here. Okay, we'll start with Councilwoman Cohen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for the clarification on this item. Back in February of 2022, we were going through a discussion about specifically revenue-generating billboards that announce the location of the airport and give information about flying SJC, which we're trying to encourage more traffic there. We approved that. We actually went through a long process because the Airport Commission had some concerns. We went back to the Airport Commission, listed concerns, made amendments to the process. Those amendments included much more stringent requirements for companies that bid on this in order to make sure that we're benefiting the entire city. The six-to-one ratio for takedowns was higher than the original requirement. The number of trees is higher than the initial requirement. We also made sure that for the airport, this would be 100% clean energy-driven. There's a $500,000, the bid we had before guaranteed $500,000 minimum revenue per year at the airport, which is not an insignificant amount for an airport that operates on, right on the margin. And we went out to bid, we didn't go out to bid because we had a contract with Clear Channel and thought, believed that legally we had the ability to do an add-on to that contract. After a court case, we were not, we were, it was determined we had to go out to bid. So we're, this action today simply goes back to that action we did in February of 2022 and goes out to bid on this particular item. But it also, I think importantly, codifies into our code the more stringent requirements that we said would be necessary if this moved forward, so that in the event this council in the future does have a conversation and decide to put digital billboards elsewhere, which this would not be happening today and has not been decided, we would have to hold those future billboards to a more stringent requirement. But this action today does not open up any other additional locations. We're not having a conversation about where anything else might be. We are specifically promoting the airport on a spot along Highway 101, right by, right by, near where the casinos are, where there's a lot of other ambient light. I think that it's a reasonable thing for us to continue down the path we approved two and a half years ago, and I'll be making a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you, councilmember. Let's go to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you. Appreciate both the mayor and the councilmember providing some context to the vote and some history of the conversation. Actually, I just do have a question for staff. I know that we didn't originally go out for an RFP because we thought we didn't need to. How much did that lawsuit cost us? Do we know?
That was prior to my time. I'm nowhere.
Do we have a name?
I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and get that information to you, councilmember. I, I don't think we had to pay attorney's fees, but I'm not positive about that because it was in their economic interest, but I'd have to go back and confirm.
Okay, so there's a case where it didn't cost the city money?
I don't know that for sure.
Okay. It'd be good, just make sure then in future discussions, we carefully understand a lot when we move forward on something like that. I, you know, I support this project. I think as a big city, we need to start thinking like a big city. You know, I think every community, there are reasons not to do something. You know what I mean? But, you know, this isn't for the entire city. This isn't even for downtown, it's just for the airport. And as the councilmember had mentioned, there's already casinos and other economic, you know, contributors of that area that have these type of lights. And so I just, I think we need to start thinking bigger. I think we need to start thinking about the city we want to become, and part of that is making sure that we have these sort of factors that contribute economically, both to, you know, our local economy, but also to the city, because I know it's going to be generating funds in that manner as well. So I support it and look forward to future discussions on this topic.
Thank you, councilmember. Let's go to Councilwoman Batra.
Thank you for that report. I just want to be
I just want to be clear. Are we approving just that you will be limited to these two, the RFP for two sign boards, and it does not extend to any other property in the city? It's city-owned property anywhere else in the city?
That is correct.
Okay. If you do want to extend that, and I think it's a question for Chris over there, that would have to be a separate proposal, will have to come in front of the council, or in this somehow it is implied that one public, city property is as good as another, and hence they could just go ahead and do it?
Thank you, council member. Martina Davis, Planning, Building and Code Enforcement Division Manager. So the action today would only approve the RFP for the airport's billboards. The policy does specify the sites that qualify for billboards. This action would not expand that list in the policy. I will mention the policy does allow for council to open it up to RFPs for properties that are not listed in the policy. However, again, that would take separate council action. That is not on the table today.
So if somebody wanted to put something on our libraries, our tech museums and all that, those will have to come in front of the council again, right?
Correct. And we did analyze the potential for off-premise advertising on libraries when this first came up, and it was problematic. So that wouldn't be something we would recommend if it did come up.
Okay. And second comment was made about the, we have a control on the content. Who is we?
So we'll follow all of our policies that we have throughout the city for lewd content, anything that's discriminatory. So all of that is already built into our airport contract with, with one of our current advertising agreements. We believe that the city has a policy, or I'm under the impression that there's a policy that outlines what is appropriate and what's not appropriate to be advertised on 101. And so we'll abide by both policies to make sure that whoever, whomever is awarded this contract will have that obligation also.
But as like it was, the comment was made by the public that when the content is changing, would they need to get the content approved each time they want to change from somebody in the city who is so-called moral authority on the content?
Council member, that's a great question. I think the process would most likely be that if we observed something that was put up that doesn't meet our standards, we would then have a conversation about what that is. But we wouldn't control every ad. Some ads are controlled by these companies, if they're digital billboards, at a national level. So they're geolocated to promote advertisements in a specific region. If we find that content not to be suitable within our guidelines, then we would have that conversation with the awardee. It, it, there are control mechanisms put in place, but I, I think what you're asking is will we be more forceful in our communication? We'll, we'll be happy to take that under consideration and making sure that we place that preference and make that comment known during the RFP process.
If I'm hearing, it's, it's the compliance is more or less voluntary compliance to whatever policy you've laid out. Is that correct? Because you're not going to have anybody designated to review this content or have the job responsibility to be monitoring this content, because if somebody complains, then you would have a way to handle it, but not an active responsibility for somebody to watch this content.
Correct. We, with, within the terminal structure, sir, we, today, we have collaborative conversations with the awardee. So there's, there's lots of collaboration on what is promoted inside of the terminal Billboard companies that, that are awarded, billboards that are publicly facing outside of the terminal buildings, this is not a practice that we've typically administered, but we can definitely put some stringent guidelines and controls around it.
I'm okay with the, the concept of you having the ability to give for the RFP two locations or two signs. The company's tendency right now to go beyond or push the edges makes me uncomfortable that there will be a proper management, and if there's reporting, by the time you act on it, the people who believe they're being harmed, they would have been harmed enough already. So unless you provide as a part of the RFP process is some kind of an active proactive management of the content so that the bad content or unacceptable content, for whatever reason, does not get there rather than have to be taken off after it gets there, I would be very uncomfortable in approving it.
Council member, I'll take that under advisement, and we'll come back to you and follow up on what policies we can put in place with current staff to give you that assurance.
Yeah, today, if you take that, that you will build some control mechanism in there so that the bad content or unacceptable content doesn't make it there rather than have to be taken off after that, I would be okay with that one. Okay? So if you're willing to take that as a recommendation in there.
Happy to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I, I know that the intent is to be able to have some additional revenues and the six to one ratio. I wasn't here when that ratio was decided, so I don't know if that's a good thing, a bad thing. I would like to see more, but you know, that's just me. I, I know there was mention about private bill, private versus public spaces for the billboards, but I would imagine that anything that was in private spaces, that we have our sign ordinance that would control that. So I just want to make sure that that is the case.
That would be correct. The sign ordinance does not allow off-premise billboards on private property.
Okay. And then in terms of, as you move forward with this RFP, I, I guess I will just mention a concern that I have because that particular, it's a, it's a, it has a lot of eyeballs in that area because 101, obviously, but it is also where the Guadalupe sort of like merges. And, you know, when you have, I think it's Dela Cruz, that whole area is quite congested. And so I was just wondering, do you have some kind of off-ramp language in the contract agreement so that if, I, I know that what you're proposing right now is 10 plus 10, but what if you find out that you're having issues or that, you know, this is, this particular area is problematic? And I guess that's what I'm more concerned about. Like, do you have off-ramp language to say, you know, that we can decide to, I mean, since you're kind of doing the RFP now, to, to, you know, I mean, I, I would like the city to be in a position to be able to, you know, like, say, hey, it's not working, or, you know, we learned this, or what have you. So I was just curious as to if that has been brought up.
To my knowledge, council member, I believe that there's an environmental process that these billboards have to go through to get qualified to go up. I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm clear on if there is traffic studies done or any kind of analysis done that would address your, your concern of road, lane change challenges, or people being obstructed in their, in their driving habits along 101. I do know that there's, there's no residential housing within a quarter mile. There's a hotel within a half a mile of visual perception of these two, or visual range of these two billboards. But the term of the contract being a 10 plus 10, the first 10 accounts for the capital investment and, and a pretty significant investment in building these signs and putting them up. So going less than 10 years might be problematic. We would have to buy the amount of a contract.
I guess I'm not, I'm not asking about, you know, less time, but if we learn, for whatever reason, because I think light is an issue, right? I don't, I'm not a light expert. I don't know, but you know, I'm glad to hear that it'll have to go through environmental review. But because it's sort of a complex issue to ensure that there are not any unintended consequences where the city would sort of, I'm thinking about other contracts where we then become liable if some, anything were to happen, that, you know, the companies would then take on the burden of liability.
I'm not educated enough to answer the question today, but what we'll do is we'll validate that with our city attorney's office representative as we negotiate this contract and make sure that we kind of hone in on that language that's suitable for the RFP before we go out. I think we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. We do have a motion to accept the staff recommendation. Just pausing to see if anyone else wanted to chime in. Okay. Tony, let's vote.
Mayor, did they need to take that, my comment as it recorded as?
The, the, council member, there's, there's sort of two options here. You can, as, as you did, ask staff if they, their own discretion, want to work on something, and they can say that they will, and you can follow up with them on that, and, and that's okay. If we, if you really want to codify it and ensure it's a friendly amendment, and then we negotiate it here with the maker of the motion. I did just call for the vote. So are you satisfied with the answer you got from staff?
Did I hear that you will follow up on that?
I will. I'll follow up with a memo. My, my team is texting me saying that we do have a vetting process in place today that will extend to these two billboards.
Okay.
Okay. So it sounds, thank you. So Mookie, it sounds like Mookie will be able to get back to you with an answer to your question, so it doesn't necessarily need to be part of the motion for him to follow through on that. Thank you. We are still waiting on one vote?
Motion passes unanimously?
Great. Thank you. Okay, we have about 13 minutes until we need to recess.
This is mine.
I think we should hear the staff presentation, but I am concerned that it may carry over. Is that, colleagues, okay with at least hearing the staff presentation before we recess? Okay. Thank you. Let's do that.
Mayor and council, Rosalynn Huey, Deputy City Manager. I'm joined by Nancy Klein, Carrie Adams-Happner, and John Poach of the Sports Authority. Our presentation will be really brief. We're going to jump right in. Very briefly, just the overview of the exciting sports events that are coming to our area in 2026. You see them listed here. We're very excited about the opportunity that it represents for the city. We see this as an opportunity for our existing residents, our community, to celebrate who we are here in San Jose, to celebrate our rich culture. Obviously, it's an opportunity to showcase San Jose to all of the visitors who will be coming into the area. And then I think even most importantly, we see this as an opportunity to actually build our muscle, our infrastructure for sports, arts, and entertainment for beyond 2026. Obviously, it takes a lot of partners. You see them here on the slide, all of the city departments that will be involved in the work, and then a host of external partners as well. Now I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Klein to give some brief highlights on each of the events.
Thank you very much, Rosalynn, and good day, Mayor and council, Nancy Klein, Economic Development. I just want to say, you know, Super Bowl is coming, and so many good things are already happening. We're very optimistic that Media Day will be happening at the Shark Tank, and there are already thousands of rooms that have been booked, 3,700 alone and 400 more tentatively that has been booked. So many people will be with us during Super Bowl to enjoy that huge event. The Marriott, one team will play at the Marriott, and they'll be practicing at, the team will be practicing at San Jose State University. The other team will be in Santa Clara and practicing at Stanford. Many things to point out about places of activation. You see a list on the site, on the slide. This is only the beginning of identification of sites. We will work with small businesses. We will work, gotcha, we will work with our Team San Jose and our major sports facilities to create places where people can gather and linger. We'll also be working with your council districts and see where you, if you, would like to host events out in your district at great places like Mexican Heritage Plaza in District Five. Next one. John is here, and he will answer. There are so many other good events coming. It's not just Super Bowl and FIFA. One is listed here as men's basketball, and there are great things that John can talk to you about. For example, Hoop It Up, which we haven't done for a while here, but it's a fantastic community event in case you haven't participated in one yet. For FIFA, we know that there are 16 cities that will host matches. 11 are in the U.S. Teams will practice here at PayPal Park and at San Jose State University. Downtown San Jose Marriott and Hilton are team hotels. Hotel Valencia will be a VIP and family hotel, and those are already booked, thanks to the work of the Sports Authority in conjunction with the sports organizations. Thousands and thousands of people are already spoken for in this area. And in the watch parties, just one thing to mention, hopefully many of you took advantage or saw the great watch parties that we already practiced with in the downtown this past summer. The Quakes, for example, hosted at San Pedro Square, and literally thousands of people were proudly support, sporting their team colors and extremely excited to be in downtown San Jose. And with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Carrie Adams-Happner.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Carrie Adams-Happner, Assistant Director of the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. Staff has developed a strategic work plan comprised of seven pillars, which are outlined in the memo, and for the purposes of brevity this evening, I'm going to just focus on highlights of each one. In the area of resources, we are very pleased to share that we are currently recruiting for the new 2026 Sports and Special Events Director, and that closes on November 25th. The administration has identified five policy areas that we are working to bring to the city council in the latter part of this fiscal year. I'm not going to go into details on each one, but we will be available for questions. What I will say is that we are, in most cases here, we are amending existing policies that we utilized when we had the regional Super Bowl 50, and then also when we had college football championships. So we're building on our experience so that we will be successful in 2026 and well into the future. And where possible, we will be seeking to consolidate this policy work, and we will be providing updates to you when we bring the new policies to the council. We will be developing a fly, stay, and play campaign with Visit San Jose, the airport, the Downtown Association, and other partners. We will be facilitating arts and cultural programming that is multidisciplinary and authentically San Jose. We want to put our best face forward to ensure that our public realm is vibrant and easy to navigate with wayfinding. For marketing, we'll be designing a virtual landing page with Visit San Jose for overnight and regional visitors. And finally, the city secured funding to conduct emergency management training, which is already underway. And as far as updates, we'll be providing ongoing status reports to the Community and Economic Development Committee as well as to council in the form of our memos when we're bringing the policy work forward and other info memos or reports as appropriate and needed. That concludes our report. I'm now going to turn it over to John Poach with the San Jose Sports Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The events we bring in, we work in transparency with Visit San Jose. My goal and my job is to bring this sporting event to San Jose. We don't manage all the events. We work with partners, whether it's a sport governing body. We work with partners, whether it's a sport governing body or it's a stadium. Our job is to bring it here. My first priority is once I bring it there, is to land the hotel contracts first, airport landing second, and then plan activations around the event. The event is not as important to me because we have it. It's what do we do around the event to create the atmosphere around downtown that leads to the sporting event that's going to benefit our city, our community, and the residents of San Jose. So FIFA World Cup, we started this process, I started the bid writing in 2017. We weren't awarded till 2022, so we're excited about that. The Super Bowl is pretty much a bid only among 32 owners and the 49ers are willing to back it with a barrier host committee. And so we handle all the logistics that touch San Jose. And the most important element was the land Media Day because we have the game the last day, the Media Day is the first day. So if people are here for Media Day and the game, where are they going to stay? That was the most important element for us. So with that being said, we're excited to have the NCAA Men's Basketball Regionals in between the two, as well as the traditional events that we are bringing to San Jose and trying to build upon, such as Rock and Roll Races, Health Expo. Our goal is to build it up to 20,000 runners. And then we're starting, as Director Klein mentioned, Hoop It Up, to create an urban street festival in downtown San Jose to help create this urban vibrancy and experience economy want. So I'm thrilled to partner with Visit San Jose and OED and OCA and the City Manager's Office to support this any way we can.
Does that conclude staff's presentation?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. How many cards do we have, Tony?
None for this item.
None for this item? Okay. What I think we'll do then is recess. We're recessing five to six. We've invited folks to, we've invited folks to join us in the rotunda for the naming of the rotunda and then we'll be back here at 6 o'clock to resume with questions and comments and acceptance of the report presumably, and then we'll move on to our final agendized item. Okay. Thank you all. See you in an hour.[1764.24][1764.24][music]